I want to be able to call to order this public hearing of Los Angeles County Commission on Human Relations. This is one of several of our public hearings on policing and human relations. This one in the four supervisory districts. So, welcome, everyone, this morning. My name is Cynthia Dany and I'm the President of the California Commission on Human Relations. Oh, but I should know any place I'd be. And I'm a professor at Los Angeles Christian Law School and I have the privilege and honor of presiding over today's hearing. So, the first thing I want to do is thank all of you who have come out this morning. It's Saturday, I know that. It's cold, I know that too. And so, I really appreciate your dedication to speak about these important matters. The other thing I'd like to do is, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners to go ahead and just introduce themselves briefly personally to each of you. So, Commissioner Dany?
I'm Eleanor Dany, over here in Long Beach, and I'm not sure if you may pronounce me Long Beach. But I'm a governor's appointee before that I was a deputy governor's appointee. And I've been a superintendent since I was young.
I am Kane, and I'm also representing the fourth district.
It's pretty much like...
Suzanne Cunningham, from the fourth district.
I'm Malina Abdullah, and I'm with the second district, appointed for the second district, and I chair this committee.
My name is Cynthia Anderson Barker, and I was appointed by Pogus Solis.
Hi, my name is Ashwaya Oden, and I represent the Service of Certain Bodies.
And seated next to me is our Assistant Executive Director, Lian Alquik Schultz. We couldn't do anything, and I want to thank the staff up front as well as others who you'll see floating around who have made this and other hearings possible. So, let me just give a little bit of background. The Commission is holding this public hearing on policing issues because policing issues, of course, have been in the forefront of our county as well as national news. And our Commission has been working on policing issues going really back to the 1943 Zoots of Rights. But we issued a report back in 1965 after the Watts Rebellion. And when the 50th anniversary of that rebellion came up, we decided that it was important to take some stock in how policing relations are going in our county and to hear from community members and community groups directly about their views on the status of policing relations in their particular districts. One of our priorities, excuse me, strategic priorities for our three-year period is specifically to increase fairness and equity in the county's criminal justice system. And so, today is the third of six public hearings that we've been holding. And we are here today because we want to hear from all of you. We want to hear what your personal experiences have been with law enforcement. We want to hear what your suggestions are for increasing fairness and equity in policing. We want to hear your ideas for building and maintaining positive relationships between the police and communities. And so, after this hearing, we'll have two more in the remaining supervisory districts. The next one is in the Watts area of Los Angeles on Saturday, January 28th, in the Watts Labor Community Action Committee. And you can see our staff for specific details on the time and place for that one, the next one. And we will also have a particular hearing just for law enforcement. Our desire was not to have law enforcement at these community hearings, so we have a special one for them. And if you want to attend that, again, please see our staff for the specifics of that, sign up to get the information. The results of this hearing and additional information will be put into a Commission report, which will include recommendations that we hope to receive from all of you. We've already been hearing from other community groups and members. It's important to know that, you know, we are an official body of the county. So, our role is fact-finding and making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors and other agencies. So, we don't have the authority to force them to do anything, although we want to. And so, we are really relying and leaning on all of you to take the kind of concern and interest that you've brought, that brought you out this morning to continue on, indeed, to put the pressure on the authorities about whatever recommendations that come from you through us to them. We don't handle individual cases, but I'm happy to say that we have law students here, some from my own school, working with the National Lawyers Guild, who will be happy to help anybody who wants to file an individual case against individual police officers over any particular issue that you experienced. I think, I thought I saw some of the students up here. There they are. And I think that what we want to do is, if you've got concerns, if, is there a place you want people to gather?
There's a table outside, but they should flag a lawsuit.
Okay, you'll flag lawsuits. Wave your hands again. Okay, there they are.
Yes.
So, flag them, because what we're going to do is try to get a critical mass of people, a couple of you together who want to do the individual complaint, and then they'll take you to another space where all of you will be able to get that individual help. After the hearings, we'll be spending time to still, and then we'll collaborate with you and other community groups on whatever the findings ultimately will be. So, at this time, what I'd like to do is turn the mic over to Commissioner Malina Abdullah, who's already introduced herself to her. She is the chairperson of our Policing Relations Committee and really has been the driving force behind our Commission's decision to organize these hearings in the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Dany. So, welcome, everyone. We're very thankful to have you here. We're very thankful to our anchor organizations also for partnering with us to have these hearings. So, if you are within an anchor org, please raise your hands. Our community orgs are here, and we want to thank you for the work that you've done in helping us to get these hearings together. So, what we wanted to do is just kind of frame what we're hoping for with these hearings. We want to recognize that communities are experts in their own experiences, right? And so, the goal, as Commissioner Dany has shared, is to collect your stories, collect your narratives, collect your experiences, to put them into the official record of what's happening with policing in the County of Los Angeles. And also, recognize that LA County does have its own, its own record on policing that has not been as well documented as we'd like it to be. So, we're trying to make sure that we document it. But the second thing that we'd like to do is, we are the Human Relations Commission, so we really want to lift up how public safety, what your ideas for are for making public safety kind of a more community-engaged process. So, we really want you to be visionary. We really want you to make recommendations for any changes you'd like to see. So, that's what this space is for, and that's also why we've asked, we have not invited law enforcement to be in this space, because we also know people sometimes feel restrained when law enforcement is present. So, this is supposed to be a community space where you can genuinely and safely share your stories. And so, that's what we'd like to have here today. So, your stories and your recommendations lifted up. I want to also say that we're trying to find points of entry where we can begin to shift policy. As Commissioner Dany has shared, we are not a policymaking body. We do, however, make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, which is a policymaking body. And so, that's also the goal. So, the goal is not just to have you kind of say things on the record, but then think about how we can take your recommendations and experiences and make recommendations based on those. Does that make sense to everyone? Good, okay. And so, thank you again for coming. We want to again uplift that if you want to file official complaints or make commendations around any law enforcement unit, oh, I should have, oh. Please see one of the law students, and they'll help you put those complaints on file, okay? Thank you very much for coming, and we hope that this is an engaging and important experience for you. And we're going to start, I think you're going to introduce them, but we're also going to have folks who are experts in, the community experts in the area of policing, offering their experiences.
Yes, 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 but I do want to at least do a little bit of the ground rule stuff. One thing first is that if you want to speak, what we're asking is that you fill out speaker forms. Like this. And I believe the staff goes outside there with those forms. So, and you'll see that it'll ask you for your name. And if you've got a specific incident, which is really the focus that we want, to actually put down date, place, the officer, or at least police department involved, that sort of a thing, we'll be encouraging you, if that's how you're going to testify, to put that up front right away. We'll be asking them to be here to speak directly in the mic so that we can record, because this is going to be recorded, everything that you said. The time limit for our organizations who'll be coming up, we've asked them to speak for about five minutes. We've been asking community folks to speak for about three minutes. The point, of course, is to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to share what their experiences are and their recommendations are. If it turns out that we have more time and people want to come back again and speak, please do so. We are going to have to end at one, because that's our contract in terms of the recording. But up until then, we want to make sure that everybody who wants to speak on the record gets an opportunity to do so. In terms of speaking, I just want to underscore that, of course, I know you're here to speak on very important issues. So, of course, we want you to be as accurate and truthful as you possibly can, and most importantly, respectful. We know that these issues are going to generate a lot of great emotion. They should. And all we ask is that you maintain a respectful attitude towards us as commissioners, towards each other, excuse me, each other, even if you disagree. And make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to actually speak about these important matters. Cell phones, please turn to vibrate, which reminds me, I better reach to do that myself. Again, this is being recorded, so if you don't want to be recorded, staff also has, you don't have to, you can both go to our Lawyers Guild, law students, if you want to file a specific complaint, but if you are commendation, excuse me. But also, if you don't want to have a particular complaint filed, we also as staff have a form for you to articulate your concerns, your recommendations, even if you don't want to actually be on the record. Again, I think I've mentioned already that you can see our staff to provide your information so that you can be kept abreast of what's happening. So, let's start our speakers. Yes, yes. I'm about to do that now. I'm about, well, I'm about to introduce the folks who are up in front first. I have Reverend Mitra Rannema from the Interfaith Council, come on down over here. Alicia Morales, who is from the Immigrants Rights Coalition, Long Beach Immigrants Rights Coalition, we'll be following her. Dawn Mottkins from Black Lives Matter LA, excuse, Long Beach, of course. Black Lives Matter Long Beach. And then Hamid Khan from the Stop LAPD Coalition. So, those folks will come up first, and then I'll start to call people. Once Hamid Khan comes up, I'll begin to start giving the names of the other people that I've got on the list so that you can begin to position yourself to come forward and to speak. Okay? Go ahead, Reverend, please. Thank you for holding the space of reflection and truth-telling. I'm the Reverend Mitra Rannema, the Interuniversals Church in Long Beach. I'm honored, I was asked by community leaders to offer a clergy voice to help shape today. I've been in this conversation about government and police and violence in Long Beach for several years. I have, as many of us have, felt a grief at the loss of life here and across our country. I've attended vigils and rallies about issues that range from officers acting as immigration control to the death of unarmed youth, to concerns about gun control, various other gatherings. I've attended organizational meetings and police community forums and watched videos of our Long Beach Citizens Complaint Commission and been in conversation directly with our city's law enforcement. I've also personally called upon the police when I needed help, and I hope to still be able to do so after today. From these places, I offer my thoughts. I've heard three primary narratives from our law enforcement that I think are at the core of the disconnection in human relationship. The first, and probably the most painful, is this narrative that the problem is about our marketing. It's this narrative that says, well, if parents and mothers would just start teaching their kids that the police are the good guys, then we can change the culture and work together. Kids should look up to officers and wanting to maybe become an officer, at the very least, don't run hands up and do everything an officer says. If we can just teach that, the narrative tells us everything will be okay. It does not address the permanent mark that a death in any town makes on the hearts and minds of all of us across the country. It's this marketing narrative. It's a tool of destruction from the reality that there are deep gashes in the fabric of our society that exist and go back long before any of us were alive. Those gashes are bleeding, and I believe they must be named again and again by our public institutions before they even become stars. The second narrative that I've heard in this is a response to people who are trying to reconcile their loss and rage and are asking for transparency. And the police and the Complaint Commission and our government leaders respond with some version of, we can't talk about it because we can't share personnel records. And I understand very much in my life the need to keep private personnel records, and I understand also that in any institution misconduct happens. I believe that will obviously be true. But I think the response, we can't tell you about it, to a question about transparency completely misses the point, because transparency is sharing the culture of policing with a larger community. What are the expectations to be in right relationship with people of color in this community? And how can we be part of setting those expectations so that they reflect that of the people? And the third narrative I want to offer out is about police, right, the right and responsibilities of police. This is another narrative we're sort of told about. On two occasions, I've heard directly from the Long Beach Police Department, including a public forum and in person from Archie, that we just have to understand that the police have the right to take a life. This messaging, I believe, says more about the mindset of our officers and our police department than it does about the law. It's rooted in this belief that the path towards our community's redemption of being good is the tools of force and more force and escalating more force. But it's a shallow narrative, because remember, under certain circumstances, we all have the right to take a life. This happened here in Long Beach in many ways. This is a shared right. Therefore, the conversation should not be about a right, rather, the circumstances and how we create a system of mutuality rather than dominance. I started a timer, and then my phone went off, so I'm going to skip a word. I want to also say real briefly that I witnessed organizations in our city in meetings and small gatherings, this really new effort to reimagine policing and security and communities who all can thrive. It's kind of exciting, reimagining of our collective standards and making them something that people can renew again and again rather than be oppressed by. The answers are not actually there, but that energy of reimagining is there. And I do not see our local governments open to that reimagining. I think that might be out of exhaustion of trying to maintain. I get that too. But this is a different time in our world where we need our local governments, where we need our local government leaders to be braver and bolder in reimagining policing and protection that we really want. What I know, you asked for ideas, is that if our entire public system, including the police, choose, make the choice, and maybe it could become policy or law, I don't know, that's not my world. But to put those who are marginalized at the center of our thinking and our policies and our social and physical infrastructure, then everyone will benefit. Those who are marginalized and experience emotional and physical discrimination every single day. Those people are, you know, the people of color, people with disabilities, those who have mental health concerns, the young and old, lesbian, gay, bisexual, queer folks, transgender folks, immigrants and non-citizens, economically disenfranchised Muslims and people who are perceived to be Muslims. You know who I'm talking about. I believe that's true. When the people on the margins are put at the center of our collective consciousness and we make policy and do reports and problem solve in every level of our local government, we all will benefit from it. So, I hope today we're salvaging the value of dignity for all, and I hope we really mean it. And outcomes of this truth-telling session be the beginnings of demanding tender care and love for each individual and ultimately for all. Thank you for listening, and thank you for honoring and allowing me to open the session. Thank you so much, Reverend. Sure, of course. Do you have some questions? Anybody have a question? You're good? Thank you again so much, Reverend.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Alicia Morales. I am lead organizer with the Long Beach Immigrant Rights Coalition. We're a grassroots organization here in the city of Long Beach that needs to serve the broader immigrant community, but also the undocumented, very specifically, the undocumented community. I am also a documented myself, which is why I have a very strong ties to this organization and to this movement. So, I'm here today to speak on behalf of both, both the immigrant community and myself, right, and the others undocumented, someone that comes from a family who's undocumented and has experienced maybe a different kind of policing in this country. A lot of, in the last few weeks, the conversations around policing have changed a lot within our community, most specifically because of our president-elect, who has made some very disgusting remarks of how he would deport millions and millions of undocumented people. And this has questioned our safety. It has questioned, um... What will lie ahead for us? It questions if we can continue to speak to law enforcement. It continues to question whether we can trust any kind of law enforcement. And it questions if we will even remain with our families in the next few months. And that's something very frightening to think about. In the past, a lot of undocumented folks have had trouble with law enforcement. One, because they're afraid of it. They're afraid of ICE, like they're afraid of not being able to share things completely because of the repercussions that may happen with legal status. That fear has heightened even more in the last few weeks because of what's happening at a federal level. And while it's difficult to influence something that's being impacted at a federal level, there are things that we can do here locally. We've seen the, we've seen LA County get rid of the 287G program, which would limit collaboration between jails and ICE and create that barrier between undocumented folks being further detained. Because for us, it doesn't just end at arrest, or it doesn't end at prison. A lot of our folks can be in prison for a couple of years and end up in detention centers for a couple of more. So, it doesn't just end for us there. We've seen the development of the Trust Act, which created some protection for undocumented folks when it came to low-level offenses, and also the way that local law enforcement can work with ICE. Long Beach PD has offered that in a written record, but we can't, we haven't been able to have a sense of accountability. So, if they were to break the Trust Act, how would we know? How can we keep them accountable? There's nothing in place for them to do so. And then, most recently, we've seen the development of things like the TRUST Act, which allow local law enforcement that wants to get involved with ICE to have some sort of community accountability and community have some sort of say in how that's going to be implemented. And so, those are just some of the policy things that we've been able to see, right? And we've been able to digest. Also, at the county level, we're looking at universal representation, which has a little less to do with law enforcement, but allows undocumented immigrants, or immigrants in general, to have some sort of legal representation after they've been arrested. So, that's just some of the policy work that we see. But it doesn't take away from the very hostile experiences that our community has experienced, especially our trans and our queer community, who have reported to us several accounts of harassment, not just at detention centers, but both PD. And in a time and place where people are really afraid, I mean, people were already afraid of law enforcement. They're just, they're breaking down in tears every time you see them. So, I know this is brief, but in the limited scope that I have been able to share, there is a possibility of limiting. And I'm speaking because I don't know what's going to happen in a couple of months, and I know that this report is going to be shared with local law enforcement. I know LAPD has adopted Special Order 40. I think that would be something that can be great adopted here in Long Beach, which could hurt law enforcement asking about legal status. Again, the accountability will probably be an issue. So, that's what I'm here to share. I also want to say that invite what has happened at a federal level and we're trying to figure out what we can do to support the immigrant community, how to protect them. I'm hoping that law enforcement really takes that into account the next three to four months, because that's where it's going to be extremely pushing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, go ahead, Commissioner.
Just a couple of questions. Long Beach PD, are officers asking folks about their immigration status or threatening them with deportation?
Not threatening them with deportation, but we have heard cases of assuming their legal status. And this is aside from the case that happened with Sheriff Adupe, right? He was the sheriff who was terrorizing undocumented immigrants and others. But aside from that, we have heard officers who are very disregarding of folks who are undocumented and kind of can make very blatant statements like, you know, you should get your papers fixed, things like that.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
You're making statements like, you should get your papers fixed, things like that. Finally, next question is, the Trust Act, Long Beach PD, you said you want to make them accountable.
Yeah, or start to. It took about a year or two before we were able to get a written statement from them, and that was after countless advocacy work. And it shouldn't have to come down to that. We shouldn't have to be asking for a written statement of a law that had passed a while ago, and it shouldn't take one and two years. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much. I've got Dawn Mottkins? you in another room so that you can actually fill out those forms. Mottkins, come on up, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, thank you for having us. I did owe some of the sentiments that Reverend Maitre made about hopes of the outcomes of today really holding water and being a true step by our county, Los Angeles County, towards not only drafting up a set of proposed solutions, resolutions, pieces of work that our law enforcement agencies can be doing moving forward, but can actually help enforce it, can actually help to make it happen in whatever realms this commission can suggest to our supervisors and other officials throughout the county, right? As we know, these incidences of police abuse is not, you know, are not isolated incidences. I think we're in a time now where we, where everyone is finally acknowledging and recognizing them. So, my name is Dawn Mottkins. I'm an organizer with, I'm an organizer generally speaking, but I also do work with Black Lives Matter here in Long Beach and supportive of a number of our other chapters. And so, a perspective that I'm going to bring is for and from our families who have been impacted by police killings, the murdering of a number of residences, a number of residents here in Long Beach, and I'm going to name them so that it's recorded the impacts that being complacent as local government has on our entire community. So they're not just killing individuals, but the impacts on their families, their immediate loved ones, the impacts on their immediate communities, the financial impacts on our local governments, right, and then just the psychological impacts on our broader communities. They're enormous. So, let me just start with them. Dante Jordan, who was 39 years old, killed November 10th, 2013. He had his cellphone in his hand. They said it was, they thought he was armed. He was unarmed. He had a cellphone in his hand. His mother ended up homeless after trying to cope and deal with her son being killed by Long Beach PD. During her court case, police harassed them, intimidated them, threatened them. It pushed her literally away. She moved outstate to Vegas, and she was gone for a year. She just recently came back. And, I'm going to move on. Tyler Woods, 19 years old, he was killed a few weeks later by Long Beach PD. He looked suspicious. He had a warrant, so when police approached him, he ran here near Fourth Street, and he ran towards an apartment building. Long story short, because this is a short time, they shot at him over 40 times, I think 39 times actually, and they hit him about 19 or 20 times, all in his back. There was video recording that captured the police officer saying, and I quote, "That nigger should not have moved." They, the family sued, the family recently settled their case for about $3 million because the city had to pay up. Nobel Aguilar was another, unarmed. Hector Waterhome, unarmed. He was in an empty apartment. The owner had given him permission to be there. Someone else saw him and called the police. They came and killed him. He had a spray can that they said could have possibly been a gun. His family also just recently settled for about $3 million. When I say settled, I just, I don't even know if that's the right term. There's no settling for the assault that's happening by law enforcement on our loved ones, so I guess just an illegal sin settled. Nephi Aragorn was killed May 7th, 2005 by Cerito Sheriff, also unarmed. Faras Marad, also unarmed. He recently settled Lionel Gibson, unarmed. Barry Prack, unarmed. Darian Hunt, just this year, Devon Thomas. Devon Thomas survived. He was also shot in his back twice. He was in ICU for over a month. Another fellow, that was a timer for me, another fellow who was with him, who was shot at numerous times, ran. An officer ran him over in his car, in his SUV truck, ran to his friend's house. His mom didn't know exactly what was going on at the moment, she let him in. Police came down the block with, you know, loud announcements and helicopters and set for him to come out. She was like, "Baby, come out." So they later tried to put all kinds of criminal charges on him and claimed that he even burglarized a random home. The mom had to go and fight and tell truth about what had really happened, that they are neighbors and she let him in. It's the criminalization, the dehumanization that police, particularly, I'm speaking on Long Beach police, that have been committed here for a long time. There's a three there. I didn't know if that was a timer for me, or am I following that? Okay. Okay. And just numerous others. Jose Romero, Martin Cortado, Marcela Byrd, Ron Settles, this was long ago, right, found beaten and hung in jail, beaten by Signal Hill Police, Ernest Rodriguez, and numerous other beatings. Most recently, October, just this past October, another $3 million paid out to two gentlemen who were beaten by Long Beach police. So, all of that, right, the impact on all of them, the fact that our local governments aren't responding, right, and leaving it up to the communities who are hurting, who are in agony, who are in pain, to have to do this work. And the other community, parts of our community who aren't necessarily, it's a touchy issue, right? Particularly for those of us who are doing the work closely with the families who have been murdered and impacted. But our other general residents, our taxpayers, our entire city is suffering. Just this year, 13, 12, $13 million was paid out of these losses. $13 million paid out of these losses. And then, the other impact, our city turns around and pushes for local legislation, wanting to employ increased taxes, wanting to use taxes on marijuana, measures A and B marijuana taxes towards police, $13 million a year specifically towards police. Another $48 million around measures A and B, chunks of which are going to the general fund and being applied to police. And so, the, you know, in terms of needs and solutions, I think in the re-envisioning that Reverend Maitre mentioned is, you know, I think that those dollars could be far more better used to address the actual needs and challenges, you know, our houseless community, our, you know, our young folks in terms of resources and activities and et cetera. Like, we all know what those needs are, but the movement around our local government to actually prioritize those needs is what is not happening. So, I'll stop there. There you go.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Good questions? Go ahead.
Well, just a couple. The majority of these killings, Long Beach PD, any other agencies involved?
Of the ones that I mentioned? This is all Long Beach, except for one, Nephi Aragorn, who was killed by Cerito Sheriff last year.
Okay. And during, after any of these killings, were any law enforcement officers prosecuted? Were they disciplined?
Um, they're, yes. Oh, sorry. No, none of these officers who have been involved in police, in killings and murdering Lionel Gibson, Dante Jordan, Tyler Woods, have been prosecuted at all. It's possible that one or two of them in different cases may have been forced to retire early, right, or might have to have had some other minor, short-term form of discipline, but not prosecuted, not terminated, and allowed to stay on the street and kill again, and have a local Citizens Police Complaint Commission who is uninformed, unresourced, un-resourced, not even under-resourced, and not allowed to do the job that that commission was set in place to do. That commission was put in place right after Marcela Byrd was killed over, I don't know, over 15, 20 years ago, specifically to instill some accountability on police around her murder and other murders that were happening around that time. And they're not being allowed to do their job to this day. And so, again, it's communities who are having to attend and press our local police, Citizens Police Complaint Commission, for them to enforce that kind of accountability. It isn't happening, folks. There's a sense of helplessness that is, I think, is exacerbating because of this lack of effort amongst our local government.
Yeah. Commissioner, go ahead.
So, thank you for that. There's, I have a couple of questions. One, I just want to, Nephi Adigay, you stated was 2005, but it was 2015, right? 2015. Okay, great. Here's what I'm hearing from you, and I'd like you to add or correct or whatever needs to be done. So, what I'm hearing is that there's a financial impact on cities with these settlements, right? I'm also hearing that there's a financial impact on communities and the individual families who experience these losses. And those financial impacts are kind of tied to the mental and emotional toll that these killings have been having, as well as the work. So I'm hearing the example that you gave with Dante Jordan's mother, the work that has to be done to advocate for justice for her son also kind of creates both mental and emotional, there's a mental and emotional toll to doing that work because, and I think you very eloquently stated that she's in this state of grief and having to do the work, but then there's also some financial toll that comes along with that. And then the last thing I heard was a diminishing of resources for community programs because there is, their cities are pushing for more resources for police rather than more resources. So can you elaborate a little bit, especially on that last point, and then I have two more quick questions for you?
Sure.
So specifically, where would you want those dollars reallocated? As you all are talking about reimagining public safety, how would you like to shift things, right?
One example of an area where I think those dollars can be better spent, I think about our schools where we used to have school counselors, regular school counselors. There were several counselors for each grade even, whose job it was to support and engage with and understand all the challenges that our children deal with in our schools, right, so that we can help to address and learn and prevent them from having to encounter greater challenges as they grow older and outside of school. We don't have that anymore. I think priorities have shifted from prevention and really getting at what our youth challenges are from that to criminalizing them, right, and jailing them. And so, I think one place is to restore, kind of, you know, divest, if you will, these funds that have been given to local police and the militarization of these police forces and sheriff forces, and shift them back to our school counseling, right, our school psychologists, community psychologists, community counseling, right? I think if some police officers have this desire to really want to help community, I think there are other ways that, that those resources can be spent in our community to allow people to truly help our community. So, community counseling and school counseling are two areas. I think, I don't want to say restorative justice, but there's another term. Transformative justice, I think, is another area that our organizations who are doing the work directly with our communities, who are most impacted by state violence and sanction violence, those resources, I think, should go to those organizations to be able to provide addressing those challenges rather than jailing and killing people.
And then just two more quick questions. I know we're in Long Beach, but this is the District Four hearing, which would also include some of the other South Bay cities. And I think we've all heard about the killing of Michelle Shirley in Torrance, and I really appreciate that you said the names of the folks who've been killed in Long Beach. I'm wondering, because I don't think we'll have another opportunity, if you know anything about that case and if there is something that you can speak about that case.
So, you know, it's hard to engage with every single family and murder that has been committed by the various police departments in Inglewood, in Torrance, in LA, in Compton, in Cerito's, and here in Long Beach, and those are just the ones who I work closely with. I have to say, I don't know as many details on Shirley's case, but I will mention someone who I hadn't mentioned a moment ago and is relevant to the militarization of our police forces, which was Donnell "Bopeet" Thompson, who was 27 years old. He was just killed this past June 28th, I believe it was. Don't quote beyond the date. But though he was 27, his family referred to him as kind of being mentally 17-ish, 17, 18 years old, quiet kid, reserved, quiet guy, reserved, small stature of maybe five feet, 4'11", about 140 pounds or so. And he was known to be a walker. The neighbors in this Compton community knew of him to be a walker. He would walk at night, and everyone knew him. I remember after he was killed, the community gathered and they all, some neighbors who didn't even know each other, all said the same thing about him offering help to take out the trash, to mow the lawn, to do little services around the house, around their home, and all he ever asked for was food. So they compared like how generous he was and how humble he was and never even really asking for anything in return. And this night... The neighbors in this Compton community knew of him to be a walker. He would walk at night, and everyone knew him. I remember after he was killed, the community gathered and they all, some neighbors who didn't even know each other, all said the same thing about him offering help to take out the trash, to mow the lawn, to do little services around the house, around their home. And all he ever asked for was food. So, they compared, like, how generous he was and how humble he was and never even really asking for anything in return. And this night that he was killed, some hours before they killed him, there was a, some other incident that was happening over a mile away, where supposedly they were chasing someone who had supposedly stolen a car. So, in that process, uh, moments after that other incident, they saw Bo Peep. And it isn't clear how they got word of him, maybe helicopter, possibly a phone call, it's unclear. But they traveled to where Bo Peep was, and when there were witnesses, who said Bo Peep immediately laid down when he heard these sirens. And he was laying down still, still. He was, his body was still, he seemed frightened. And again, his demeanor and his character was one of fear and just a reserve. He was really quiet and didn't open up to a lot of people. And he laid in the driveway on his stomach, just afraid and didn't move. And so, when, and commands were made, but being who he was, he just didn't move. He was afraid. And they riddled him with, um, being, uh, the bags, the, uh, air with pellets, being like, uh, whatever, the, the, supposed to be lesser league form of ammunition. And he, moments, maybe fifteen or so minutes later, he finally just got up and proceeded to walk. Well, there were military tanks, there's another term that they use, but they're military tanks, that were on that block. And the officer who shot him was the officer that was on top, coming out of the top of that military tank and shot him as he stood and took a few steps. Um, why are there tanks in our neighborhoods, right? Why is our money being spent that way? And why are they unnecessarily killing unarmed people? So, sorry I couldn't give you Shirley, but when you, about other departments, um, that's another one that speaks to the militarization of our departments and where they're trying to spend resources that could be better used in our communities.
Thank you. I think it's really important that the stories are on record, um, so thank you for that. Um, last question, which is pretty quick. You mentioned, um, the Long Beach Police Commission, um, which is, you said it's under-resourced, there's, or there's no resources for it. Um, does it meet and does it have any power even though it doesn't have any resources?
Um, so, the CPCC, Citizens Police Complaint Commission, as I mentioned, was established right after the police killing of, uh, this Byrd, uh, Marcella Byrd. And I think residents of Long Beach who even know it exists, many people don't, know that it has no power. Uh, this commission was set up to create a front of accountability. Um, people do not attend them. Most people don't know that it exists. And recently, we went, uh, a number of us went to a meeting where there was no one but us, I think one other person. And, um, they were learning about how police handled those officer-involved shootings. And they were, this was the first time that they were hearing about what those procedures and processes are. So, we're, we have an understanding from folks who work closely with them that they don't know what they're doing, that they're often having to ask for information from the police. There's one person who has authority to decide which complaints get heard. File a complaint with this commission. It goes to this one person, and they pick and choose what will go forward to the commission. And even when it goes to the commission, they, they ask the commission to, um, they suggest to the commission how to respond to those complaints. And, I don't know, I can't give you an accurate percentage, but probably close to ninety-five percent of them, they're like, they're just, the outcomes of their views are no barrier.
Is the person that you're talking about a staff person, a police person? When you say, who decides on, gets the complaint and then recommends?
Her name is Anitra Dipsey, and she is a staff person for the city. And she works for Mayor Garcia and works directly with him. She is assigned to also kind of coordinate with the, um, with the police internal affairs, which seems to me like there might be a little bit of conflict of interest there because if you're working for them, how are you ensuring that the commission is able to do their job to really look at the complaints around the murders, the assaults, the beatings, the threats, the intimidation that Long Beach Police is so known for? Um, and so, she, that position, I won't just say her, but that position is set up in such a way that it is to drive, uh, how they're able to operate. So, they're often having to ask for more information. They're often having to ask for details about the cases. They would like to be able to make their own decisions rather than go with the suggestions that are coming from an individual and possibly from the police themselves, right? So, it's not working. And I think we're finding around the country, these commissions, that, um, the ones that are, who are fortunate enough to at least have some, have one or some, um, they're not working, right? And so, yeah.
Thank you for sharing, and I think you clearly established a pattern of these tragic incidents. For the first, um, that you shared, you said that during the court case, the police department, um, threatened and harassed the victim's family. And I was going to maybe elaborate on that, please, because I find that very interesting that was done when the court case was being viewed and elaborated.
Dante Jordan, um, has two sisters and his mother and other family members. And they were all active in their proceedings, uh, and his daughter's mother as well. And, um, they found they were being pulled over all of a sudden for random reasons that made no sense. Um, they would get random visits at their home questioning, um, them about the incident. Um, they felt that when some of those folks who would come to their home posing as media representatives, for example, they felt like it was the police themselves who would include in their statements to them things like, you know, you just shouldn't come back to court, or, uh, maybe you shouldn't go back to court, or making suggestions, um, to deter them from engaging further in their effort to hold police accountable. So, that's what gave them reasons to believe that, who are you really? And so, it made them fearful.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hamid? Hamid Khan?
Thank you very much. My name is, uh, Hamid Khan. I am with a group called the Stop L A PD Spying Coalition, which basically is a community-based organization that looks at the expansion of counterterrorism and counterinsurgency tactics that are increasingly being incorporated into domestic policing. But before I start my comments, I think it would be helpful for us to ground ourselves in, uh, in some of the factors. In 2015, law enforcement in the United States killed every seven hours and fifty-one minutes. One thousand, one hundred and forty-six people were murdered by the police in the United States, which comes to every seven hours and fifty-one minutes, someone was killed by cops. This year, we're already at about seven hours and fifty-eight minutes, every seven hours. So, today, three people or more will be killed by cops in the United States. So, that's, so these are the facts that we are facing. Since 2011, in Los Angeles County or all across the United States over the last five years, three years, L A P D has led the nation in killing the most people. They killed twenty-one last year, they've already killed nineteen, and they're leading the country. If it was, if it wasn't the L A P D, it was the L A Sheriff's Department that is leading the country. Third fact, I think, if it's necessary for us to remember is that since the year 2000, in the last sixteen years, in six Southern California counties, there have not been a single conviction of a police officer. There was one indictment in Riverside County, and that indictment was dropped as well, and there was no conviction. So, these are just the grounding facts. We're told, uh, that innocent until proven guilty and due, and due process are the bedrocks of the, of the legal system in the United States. But I think these, uh, these remain a figure of imagination for many communities. These remain theories for many communities as well. Because when it comes to people of color, particularly for the black community, undocumented immigrants in various other communities, these practices are set aside. We've had the war on drugs, we've had the war on gangs, we've had the war on crime, and we've seen the devastating impact on communities. Mass incarceration, massive displacement, and billions and billions of dollars lost in, in, in resources which could have spent of what public safety really means. More schools, more community centers, more health centers. But now, over the last sixteen years, we've seen the war on terror unleashed on our communities. And what I'm asking you was, and the audience was, this chart, this circle, that we have mapped out, which looks at the Los Angeles Police Department, but is being replicated by every other police department, that this is the architectural surveillance, information gathering, and tracking of people. What we have is increasingly, since the year 2000, 2011, that law enforcement agencies around the country, with Southern California law enforcement agencies, particularly the Sheriff's Department and Los Angeles Police Department and Long Beach Police Department and Santa Monica Police Department and Torrance Police Department, and I can go on and on and on, using these tactics which grants them immense amount of immunity, which grants them, grants them immense amount of secrecy, and basically a license to racially profile and a license to kill. If you look at these things, we hear things about predictive policing. Now, what is predictive policing? All of a sudden, we are being told that predictive policing is a technological-based solution, a market-based solution, because computers don't racially profile. But predictive policing is based upon previous and historic crime data. So, if the historic crime data is built on, is based upon racist policing, so what you're going to have is racist outcomes out of that as well. In Los Angeles, we have these fancy named programs, like the Los Angeles Extraction, Los Angeles Strategic Extraction and Restoration Program, Laser Program, where they identify people, people who may not have committed any crime, they may be on probation, they may be out there. But they are put into these databases, and then they are tracked by license plate readers, they are tracked by closed-circuit television, they are tracked by cell phone catchers, and they are tracked by various other means. We are seeing programs like the Suspicious Activity Reporting Program, where individuals are being put into these databases. I'll give you a couple examples, for the Sheriff's Department, it's called Tips and Leads. That a group of college students or an art student go out on a field trip, on a photography trip. They get stopped, they get harassed, their information is uploaded to these databases, which go to fusion centers, and the FBI gets to keep these files for thirty years, and then their names are on H R J R S and chat services, just for the mere act of taking a photograph. We're seeing audits being done of these programs in Los Angeles, where the city of Los Angeles has less than ten percent of black population, but in these counterterrorism files, Inspector General's own audit showed that over thirty percent of these files identified individuals as black. That's a three-to-one impact of the black community. And where they had identified gender, fifty percent of these files were over on black order. So, in essence, what we are happening is this convergence of these policies and tactics and programs that need to be dispensed. So, I'm going to, and then this, so here I'm going to give you some recommendations from the Stop L A P D Spying Coalition, which is not just a group of one, it's a coalition that involves several organizations, Youth Justice Coalition, Los Angeles Community Action Network, Black Lives Matter, Interfaith Communities, United Artists of Justice, National Lawyers Guild. And the first recommendation is that there has to be a thorough investigation and scrutiny of these programs and tactics. We can't explain that in five minutes. It is not possible. Number two, there has to be an immediate stop and moratorium placed on these tactics and programs, and an investigation has to be done, where this body or other bodies need to have the power to investigate these files to see if people's human rights and civil rights have been violated. The cities are paying millions and millions of dollars to families whose loved ones have been murdered. The cities and the county has to take the same thing, that reparations have to be paid to people whose civil and human rights have been violated. Until that happens, we're going to continue in this circular motion. The third recommendation we have is that there has to be an immediate rejection of any new surveillance technology or any new program that the Sheriff's Department or any other police department in the Los Angeles County, in Los Angeles County wants to incorporate. And lastly, I would, I would suggest very strongly and recommend to you, and I'll go back to it, that what we are seeing is this convergence of counterterrorism programs, of counterinsurgency programs, which are also giving a license to profile and a license to kill to individuals as well. You may have seen these billboards which say, "See something, say something." See something, say something, needs to do something. We saw what happened with Trayvon Mark. We saw when George Zimmerman called 911 and said, "I see somebody suspicious in my neighborhood." So, what we are seeing is that not only law enforcement agencies are invading our privacy, not only are they engaging in racial profiling, not only it's a waste of resources, not only is this police not evidence-based, but there's a license to profile and kill that has been given private individuals as well. Because see something, say something promotes community involvement. It promotes communities to report suspicious behavior. So, I will stop there. Let's see if we have any questions, and we'll be happy to follow up in a later conference.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that. There was, um, you, you may, gave us some data on the number of indictments, and I think you said six counties?
Six, something like that.
Do you know how many, because we're the L A County Human Relations Commission, do you know how many indictments in L A County specifically?
None to my knowledge.
Thank you.
So, when you say reparations must be paid, and you referred to the settlements of various lawsuits received as a result of police killings, you're talking about reparations for folks who've been victims of law enforcement surveillance?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, that's what I'm speaking about. Because I think what happens is that as we are hearing these stories, we have to remind ourselves that these are real lives lost. But in the system, they become a number. So, we have to get beyond this traditional analysis and start looking at lives. And there has to be a concerted effort to open these files, to investigate these files, to set up a commission, which is, which is comprised of communities and civil rights attorneys and human rights attorneys to look to see if people's rights have been violated. Otherwise, you know, what we're looking at is National Security Police State that is, that is functioning with completely greedy and incomplete citizens.
And don't you, you want people out of the databases, right?
We want absolutely people to be struck out of these databases, and these databases have to be exposed, and these programs have to be dispensed. But we, we cannot reform something that is based on speculation and hunchbase because it's going to continue to be a mistake based on question.
Is there a way for an individual to find out if they're in this database?
They do not, Commissioner. I mean, for example, the Suspicious Activity Reporting Program is so draconian, the Tips and Leads Program that the Sheriff's Department uses, that we can request our files from the FBI, but we as an individual cannot, we don't even know that we are going to get these secret files. And the way they have also created more barriers, and this is all happening under the guise of national security as well, that we have to file a lawsuit. Well, if we don't know that you're in these secret files, how are you going to file a lawsuit? So, we've been kind of going, so I think that is another way that this commission can get the, the Los Angeles County to educate the communities on what these programs are and what their rights are. what their rights are.
So, it's the sheriffs that are holding these?
It's the Sheriff's Department, it's the Los Angeles Police Department, it's a combination of all local law enforcement agencies, transit police, campus police, tribal police, so this is a mega, a huge apparatus that is in play. And lastly, I would say is, that the sheriffs that ends directly with are the fusion centers. These are the warehouses of information gathering, these are the spy centers, there are about eighty-five fusion centers around the country, one of the biggest ones is in Norwalk, in East Los Angeles County. The sheriff staffs that, the sheriff controls that, and the sheriff is directly responsible, and a lot of our money is going into it. About eighty percent of the budget is made by local municipalities and counties and states. So what we are asking for you is, to be very clear about it, that these fusion centers need to be funded.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Julia. Absolutely, always helpful.
Okay. Joanna Diaz? Oh, just as a reminder, folks, if you do want to speak, because other folks have come in, you do need to fill out this form, so we can get a sense of the order. We are going to try, as we now start having folks who have not been in our anchor groups to keep at our three minutes, because we're filling up, and I'm saying that we want to make sure that everybody can have an opportunity. We will have more time for folks if there is translation involved, so I do want you to know that. Other than that, we are trying to stick with our three minutes, everybody can come in, and we'll come back around if we've got the time.
Thank you very much. So actually, I wanted to hand it over to Janet first, if that's okay, so that she can go a little bit into her case.
Are you Joanna?
I am Joanna.
Okay. Speak right in.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Janet Lazzaro, soy, vivo en Long Beach, California, y vengo a contarles muchas mis experiencias sobre perfil racial.
I'm sorry, we can't hear.
Can you hear now? Yeah, that's good, okay. So, good morning, my name is Janet Lazzaro, I live in Long Beach, California, and here I'd like to talk a little bit about my experience with racial profiling.
Yo fui víctima de perfil racial en el 2012, dado que un chelito de Los Ángeles agarró nuestra comunidad para descomisarnos los autos. Pero en lo personal fui muy afectada porque soy madre inadmitida, es verdad, tengo cuatro hijos nacidos aquí, pero, o sea, mi enojo más fue, ay, lo recuerdo, y esta vez sé que lo viví ayer, mi enojo fue que por la nada quitaba los carros.
And so, I have been a victim of racial profiling in an incident that happened in 2012. It was a sheriff from Los Angeles who made a point of taking people's cars away. This affected me very much directly. I am an undocumented mother, I have four citizen children who were born here, and what makes me angry is that they were taking our cars away for no reason.
Este chelito nada más agarraba a las mamás latinas para quitarles sus autos cuando era una necesidad para ir a recoger, porque yo iba a recoger a mi niña a la escuela. No, yo no soy de la pelomía, no soy nada, yo trabajo, y a mí me gusta estar en este país y hacer las cosas bien.
And so, that sheriff, he would target Latino women who take their cars away, who all they were doing was going to pick up our children at school. I was picking up my child at school that day, I had never committed any kind of felony, I've never done anything, all I do is work, and I want to be in this country and do the right thing.
Es difícil recordar eso, pero nada más como ustedes tienen para hablar con los chelitos, es muy feo, muy feo vivir esa experiencia.
And so, this is a hard thing to remember, but you who are able to talk to the sheriffs can do so, it's a really ugly experience to remember.
Pues han pasado cuatro años y hasta hoy no me he podido recuperar porque mis niños lo recuerdan cuando ese chelito se agredió, a nosotros nos agredió.
And it's been four years ago, but I still haven't been able to get over it, because my children remember when that law enforcement person abused us.
Porque no, no tenía ningún motivo para quitarles el carro, nada más por verlos latinos, nos quitaba el carro, los atacó económicamente, yo ya no pude recuperar mi auto, porque era mucho dinero lo que él pedía.
And there was no reason to have taken our car away, it was only that he saw that we were Latinos, and it had a great impact on us. I wasn't able to get my car back, because it was so much money that was being asked for it.
El primer día que entraron para agarrar las licencias de conducir, quiero decirles que fui la primera, el día dos de enero del 2014, en agarrar mi licencia, porque yo quiero vivir en este país y hacer las cosas como son bien.
And I want to say that on the very first day that our people were able to get our licenses, I went, and I got my license on January 2nd, 2014, because I want to live in this country and do things the right way.
¿Qué más les puedo contar de mi experiencia? Soy víctima de perfil racial de la policía de Long Beach. Gracias.
And what else can I say? I am the victim of racial profiling on the part of the Long Beach Police Department.
It was the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to clarify.
Okay.
All righty, so thank you very much, Commissioners, for being here, and our guests as well. My name is Joanna Diaz, and I, along with several of our other community members, began organizing around this particular sheriff's deputy named Deputy Veylupek out of the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I'm sorry?
Say his name again, please.
Deputy Veylupek, V-E-Y-L-U-P-E-K. And so, we initially began working on this issue, because we started working with a large number of parents, and mothers in particular, like Janet herself, in this community who have very similar experiences with this same exact sheriff's deputy. Just some brief background, he would stake out, literally, in front of a local elementary school, where he knew, and he had learned over time, that there was a large number of undocumented parents who attended that school, and who would be driving their children. He knew when the schedules were, when they were going in, and when they were coming out. And when that school was shut down and relocated to be rebuilt, he followed them to the new location. This particular deputy was assigned to be watching over the blue line, which was almost two miles away from where he was staking out at the time. So there's a huge number of concern, also going in line with what Ms. Janet shared. But also in line with that is that, through this work, we were able to work, very thankfully, with the National Lawyers Guild to compile a report. And in that report, it contained numerous testimonies from these community members that we were able to collect with different community forums that we held specifically for this, right? And so, from there, I just want to share very briefly a few examples. There was one mother who was striving to apply for DACA, right, the Deferred Action for Childen Arrivals, and she was unfortunately stopped by this particular deputy, and harassed tremendously by him. And he eventually, basically threatened, essentially threatened her, and said, you know, that there's no point in her pursuing her DACA, because he could ruin that, all of that, and he could get her deported. And so, that was one example. Another example is that there was a family together in the car, and he looked over and was laughing, and looking at the children and saying, "Children, isn't it funny when I'm taking your parents' car away? It's funny." He's like, "Why don't they learn English?" He's like, "They need to go back to their country." So that was another example. So as that, and as Janet also touched on, is that there's a tremendous amount of trauma in our community as a result of this individual and his behavior. Children, there was one child in particular at one of the community events, who had a nervous breakdown, and literally ran out of the room crying, because she could not be in the same room as a police officer in one of the community forums that we were collecting testimony. So what she instead did was write a letter to the police, and expressed why she was so afraid. In line with this, right, there's a lot of connections to immigration. This particular deputy understood that very deeply, and used that to his advantage, right, to torment our community here. Literally, there was an unofficial system within the community members to contact each other and inform each other when he was out on the streets of fear. When we had a meeting with, at the time, he was Sheriff Laca, this individual deputy learned about when that meeting was going to happen, we were having it at a church, and he made it a point to arrive early, and sit outside on his motorcycle, and shine his motorcycle in the parking lot of a church, as the parents and the families were coming in to that workshop. So that's a major concern that we've had, right? In the end, he was reprimanded, and he proceeded to do donuts on his motorcycle in a church parking lot in the afternoon. So this is the type of mentality of this particular individual, and level of, or lack of level of maturity, right, and ability to handle these situations in a productive manner. And so, this leads me to speak a little bit more, right, about some of our very specific concerns that have arisen from this case. Overall, obviously, there's a lack of transparency in this process. There were a number of complaints that were inputted and were disregarded, and it wasn't until we continued to organize and had the report, and made a very conscious effort, that we were able to continue. From there, that there was no legitimacy to be able to hold the departments accountable, right? We would file these reports, and there was no accountability, and so there was no follow-up. There's limitations in terms of the Office's Bill of Rights that are presented, that were a major concern for us, because out of fear and concern, we were not able to know where this gentleman was finally removed from Long Beach and where he was sent. It was by chance that we discovered that he was sent to another predominant Latino area, which is a huge concern. Once we realized that, and we pushed to have him removed off of the streets, it was another chance encounter that we realized that he was actually placed in the office of the department that holds and handles the towing and impound. There was a suspicious relationship with him in the tow yard, that he would literally have the tow truck waiting already, or he knew he was going to be staking out. So they were already there when he was pulling people over. So some of the ways, and again, connections to immigration is a major concern, that level of harassment. Obviously, the Sheriff's Department isn't the only one that we're concerned about. We've had seven different deportation cases from both the Sheriff's Department and the Long Beach Police Department, two of which were Trust Act violations, which is very concerning. One, that was a CSALB police deputy officer, and so that particular case, he was unfortunately considered a priority, a priority deportation case. So that also uplifts the need for a change in the discourse, and the way that we address our issues and concerns within immigration, is that we really need to work away from having that police and ICE collaboration, because the level of fear and trauma that comes connected with that really affects public safety as a whole. People will refuse to report crimes, even domestic violence crimes, simple petty thefts that are occurring in their community, so it definitely increases the risks within our community. And so that is a huge issue, where we really need to move away from the good immigrant, bad immigrant narrative, and support our communities as a whole. We really need to improve accountability measures, and have a form of independent review board, that's not answerable directly to the law enforcement agency in question, someone who is not funded by, or supported by, or a part of, connected to in any way, because for us, it is completely illogical to have someone supposedly try to hold each other accountable, when we know already that that's not going to happen, as was the example in this particular case. One of the things that we would love to be able to recommend is to have a form of updated trainings, and especially now with the elections, as one of my colleagues mentioned earlier, there is an extreme amount of uncertainty and fear that is a result of this election, and we need to make sure that police officers and deputies, sheriff's deputies, are effectively trained themselves, are very knowledgeable about what the laws actually are, including the Trust Act, and actually do trainings, thank you, to the community as a form of reaffirming the policy.
And what I'd really like for you to do, because we're out of time.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Please, if you've got that list in writing, submit it to us, because I know you're part of an organization, that would really be helpful. It's great to have the personal experience. Thank you so much, Dassis, for testifying to that, and your list of recommendations, if you can get that in writing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment on that incident that the Lawyers Guild worked on. The travesty in this whole process with this sheriff's deputy was that the punishment he received was simply moving him off the Metro Line when he wasn't even working on the line, and moving him to another office where he could answer phone calls about inquiries about how did my car get encountered or towed. So that was his discipline.
Thank you. I've got Camilla Holmes. There you are. And after her, Michelle Hunter, who you're already close by, and Rachel Smith. Rachel Smith, will you be here? Maybe you'll be here when we get there, and if you can, if you're not, right over Michelle's, then you can sit over there, so you can sit. You don't have to move, because you're so close. If anybody goes over here, good morning. And please speak right in, just like you're a rapper or something.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Camilla Holmes. I live in South Wrigley, it's a neighborhood primarily people of color.
Can't we, maybe you pull it a little closer?
I live in South Wrigley, it's a neighborhood primarily people of color, and the other day, something happened, I was leaving my home, and I didn't know what had happened, but later I found out there was a burglary at one of Close Five businesses. But what troubled me was, the police response was what I would consider, basically, an occupation of several blocks in my neighborhood. The thing is, I've never personally heard of that kind of thing happening in any of my friends', you know, white neighborhoods, but, and I know that there's crimes there, there's drugs there, but not this occupation that happens in neighborhoods of color. Frequently, in my neighborhood, I'll see multiple police cars driving around, and they don't appear like they're, you know, in a hurry to go anywhere, they're not on a call, just kind of, you know, cruising around and driving around. This also, I also don't see this in non-neighborhoods of color. It makes me feel like they're looking for somebody to stop and arrest, and it doesn't make me feel safer in my neighborhood. In contrast, a while ago, a man ended up on my block, and he was very severely injured, and so we did call 911 for the ambulance and for the police, and had to actually call several times, because they took so long to get there. And we found out that the police had actually delayed the ambulance in coming, because they were, I don't know what, securing the area or whatever, so it took a lot, this man was severely injured, it took him a long time, because the police delayed that. On another note, I was involved with the effort to help pass Proposition 47, and subsequently in an effort to create a clinic to help with the reclassification. Since Prop 47 passed, there's been this kind of false narrative with the police and other city officials, that because of Prop 47, the crime rate has increased, and this is what they're peddling in our communities. They come to the, I heard one officer at our Neighborhood Association meeting, and from my vantage point, the only thing that does, serves to do is, kind of create this distrust between the community, between members of the community, distrust and fear of each other. So it allows them to criminalize one half of the community, and then while the other half of the community kind of goes along with it and perpetuates that. Okay, that's not okay, and I don't think it bodes well for relations between...
Okay, that's not okay, and I don't think it bodes well for relations between police and the community.
Thank you so much.
Do you have any recommendations?
I'm sorry. Ms. Holmes, there is a question from the commissioner here.
Do you have any specific recommendations?
Well, I guess one is the kind of criminalization of people of color, neighborhoods of color. And the idea that, I've been to town hall meetings where the Long Beach, the police chief has basically, it's a blame the victim attitude, like, don't, you know, and like it was said before, the problem is basically that you're not doing exactly what the police says, ignoring that. You do have rights to ask questions because he said, you know, if you feel you're being stopped unreasonably, don't, you know, don't question the police, basically. Just go along with it, and then later on you can come back and, you know, give me the complaint or something.
Thank you so much. Michelle Fuente. And after her, I've got Rachel Smith. Anna Guerinter. Okay. If you can start moving to those chairs back there so we'll be able to. And then Chantal Prado. So just, you're kind of ready to go. You're kind of close enough, so.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here. My name is Michelle Fuente, and I am administrator for Dignity and Power Now. I'm also lead campaign for civilian oversight. We helped pass civilian oversight for the LA County Sheriff's Department.
Walk a little closer, Michelle, please. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. In 2011, I was in CRDF California Regional Detention Facility. While I was inside there, was sexually abused by staff and Sheriff's Department. So please forgive me for the language I'm about to use, but there's no way to fluff up what happened while I was inside. I injured myself, and I was taken upstairs to medical staff. And while I was up there, staff came out with his pants around his ankles, and he was jacking off in front of me. And when I complained about it, they cut me loose at 2:30 in the morning by myself with no shoes. All my money and everything was inside, and I was like, go at like 3 o'clock in the morning out in the dark. I really like that area. So, fast forward to February of this year, 2016 through August. I met a girl. She came to our office, and she explained to me that while inside and incarcerated in there, that there's still sexual abuse going on, there's medical negligence going on. She was given the wrong medication that could have killed her. And when she filed a complaint, the complaint went to the department. And they came back and brought the nurse out, and the nurse stated that it wasn't, she didn't do it, and it never went any further than that. While she was in there, she saw officers pick girls against each other, encourage girls to go ahead and commit suicide. The process, I've discussed this before, by which you enter the facility is in a huge garage where you come in and your hands are really filthy, and you have to touch your vagina lips, and then you have to put your hands in your bottom, and then you have to stick them in your mouth in order to make sure that there's no contraband there. For me, it was a dehumanizing experience. It violated my human rights and civil rights. And to quickly state, one of the things that I think that could change and that needs to change is it starts from the very beginning when there's recruitment. They're hiring people that don't have the mental capacity. And it starts right there because I've been there with Mark Anthony Johnson, who is the wellness director of Dignity and Power Now. We watch the recruitment. It starts there. They encourage, they perpetuate behavior that's unbelievable, and it's acceptable to the department. One of the things that the department can do is they can get what's called, if I may, it's called the MMPI. It's called the Minnesota Multifaceted Personality Inventory. And it is a psychological test that assesses personality traits and psychopathology. It's primarily intended to test people who are suspected of having mental health or other clinical issues. And mental health issues are very apparent with the people that LA County Sheriff's Department is hiring.
Thank you so much.
Can I just, really quick, just say, I'd like to acknowledge Reginald Thomas. He was murdered by LA, by Pasadena Police Department and LA County Sheriff's. He was tased multiple times and died. He was a father of eight and left a family. And now his family, for many, many years to come, like myself and many other people, are tortured with PTSD and left without a loved one. It affects people forever. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michelle. You have a question?
Just quickly, your own experience, when you said you were released at 3:00 AM with no shoes, what year was that?
That happened in 2011, and I was in from May until November.
Okay, so it was before my Teresa Richardson's Law was passed?
If, I'm not familiar with that, but if it was between, after, November of 2011, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Smith. I'm an organizer with Unite Here Local 11, which represents thousands of hotel and restaurant workers throughout Southern California. I would like to thank everyone that shared and has spoken before me. I'm going to speak about the behavior of Long Beach Police Department in a slightly different arena. As an organizer, I work with working men and women, mostly people of color, in order to improve their working conditions and provide better livelihoods for themselves and their families by forming a union in their workplaces. We, currently, my work focuses on multiple hotels in downtown Long Beach. I lead workers in protected activities such as picketing outside the hotel, chanting, and leafleting. These are protected activities under the First Amendment, but it doesn't seem like any of the Long Beach Police Officers that we've had experience with have this opinion. And on multiple occasions, Long Beach Police Officers have showed up to our peaceful protests with four, five, six, seven patrol cars and upwards of five to 10 officers for about five people in a protest. Immigrant men and women at these picket lines are already afraid. They're already standing up to their managers by being outside of their hotels. And when the police officers show up this way, start recording them and intimidating us and trying to get us to stop doing these actions, it only heightens their fear. They've recorded us, like I've said, they've issued us warnings and citations. I myself was given multiple citations just for being outside and speaking on these picket lines. At the same time, they've done very little to protect us from hostile residents that, thus, while we've been outside these hotels. Two of my coworkers and a worker from one of the hotels were physically assaulted, and it took them upwards of 45 minutes to an hour and a half to even respond to one of our calls. Myself, I had an incident with a guest, and the police officer just tried to convince me not to fill out a private persons arrest form. He said it wouldn't do anything. It would probably get drawn. It's clear that we're not breaking the law, and there have been times when these patrol cars have just been, come out and just stood and watched us for over an hour. I feel that this type of behavior is excessive, and police resources that have been allocated to deal with these peaceful, lawful protests can be better used somewhere else in our communities to actually ensure safety. And I'm really curious why these resources are being used in that way, where they will have multiple officers just standing around watching us and also someone across the street just recording us.
Thank you. Question?
What were the citations for being outside and speaking on a picket line? What was the charge?
It was a 415.
What 415 is thirty in the piece? Thanks.
Okay. I've got Anna Guerinter, Chantal Prado, and then Michael. You can begin to go in those chairs back over there. My name is Anna Guerinter. A transgender woman. Okay, trans, I'm sorry. While we can't hear, you gotta put it right up to your.
Right into it.
There you go. Okay.
I am here, and I can tell you that.
Keep close, keep close. Closer still. I know it's very unnatural to do this, but I'd be sure, so we can all hear you and be recorded.
I was already nervous, sorry. Most of my friends in the trans community are people of color, and they don't even feel safe coming to a place like this. I can tell you that I'm intimidated coming to a place like this. I'm gonna tell you a story, and I hope that Beamer can just hold it a second because it's gonna take longer than those two minutes. I was homeless. I lost everything, and I decided that I was gonna transition before I killed myself. I was out apartment hunting, and I had gotten help, gotten a slip of paper that said it would help me with an apartment. Getting a property manager to accept it was a different thing. I finally worked with the property manager, and I showed up at this apartment building. And I'm looking into this vacant apartment, and it's kind of cute, and it's got a little grass spot, kind of all to its own, and that's really rare in these kind of apartments. And I fell in love with it. And from behind me, I hear this voice say, "You're not living here." And I'm brand new to transition. I'm just scared. Anyway, and then I start to turn and walk out of the complex, a small little place. And he runs out and starts calling me a half man, half woman, and, "Get out of here." And I scooted right out of there, and he followed me out to public property, out on the sidewalk. And I said, "Let me stay here and talk to this property manager, please. Just let me..." And I go, "I don't want to live here, obviously. Let me not lose this." And he just kept on calling me a half man, half woman, which is an interesting slur. Anyway, we didn't stop until he assaulted me. I wouldn't leave. In retrospect, I wish I had just left, but I was desperate for a place of shelter. When the police came, he took one look at me and said, "You, go stand over there." And I said to the person that assaulted me, "You, come here. Tell me what happened, bro." There was another officer. I would like to call the good cop. Except for that, this is, I think, Bruce Point, that there really probably aren't. Because she heard me. She listened to me. She knew I was telling the truth. He was over talking to him. And then this officer comes over to me and says, "Get out of here before I arrest you." And I said, "But..." He goes, "You don't belong here." And I said, "Yes, if you have the property manager's number, I can prove it right here with my cell phone." And lots of them were sure. She knew I was telling the truth. She absolutely knew it. I walked away, having been hit about 10 times with a big stick candle that big. Crushed, feeling like, okay, I have no safety and no place to live. And I saw her talk to this cop, this female cop, talk to this other cop, and say, and even stick up for me a little bit. And at first, that felt like something. And then I go, "But if that's what a good cop does, is protects the ego and disrespects the human people on that level, then there's no such thing as a good cop." Until they all start standing up and saying, "This is not acceptable." If I know I can get away with anything in front of me, the person, the person's gonna protect me. And you know, I don't like to get away with stuff anymore. The point is, is that there's no accountability when your peers are not making you accountable. And they don't do that, and we know that that is the problem. And until we truly get some sort of accountability, we do need total restructuring. And there's no such thing as a full life. You can take off your uniform. You can choose another occupation. There are black lives, transgender. And why the hell, when I say, "Black lives matter," is the response, "All lives matter." If I say, "Save the rain for us," you don't say, "Save all for us." If I say, "Liberate trans people," you don't say, "Well, liberate everybody." No. Black lives matter. Everybody, life matters. Equality has to happen. If we can't feel safe, most of you probably know what it is to have a home and feel safe. The people that don't can't even cope.
Do you have questions? Hang on, four seconds.
Just quickly have the name of the police department. Was that Long Beach PD?
We've had three different main incidents with Long Beach PD, yes.
So this was on, and then when was the incident?
That would have been early October of 2014.
And then finally, so as a result, is some, no cop, no Long Forest Officer, no police report? No report was handed?
He wouldn't listen to my side of the story.
And you were the one with the, you were the one.
Thank you so much for coming. You're Chantal Prado? Yes, I need to go on.
Yeah, so that's the document that we, it'll all explain in just a moment.
Okay. A little closer.
Better? Yes, that's better. Great. All right, so I'm Chantal. I'm here from YJC, and I just want to give you a little update on what we're doing. So currently, we are reading reports on the DA's, on findings of the DA and their investigation on police actions specifically involving shootings. A lot of the reports that we have been reading are from 2009 to 2015, and currently, we're in the process of tabulating this data. And so far, what we've found is that the reports have similar paragraphs that seem to be copied and pasted within several different reports, meaning that they are not taking the time to actually do the reports themselves. So they're not really reporting the data or the incidences accurately. And a lot of this information, it's, you know, it does deal with police brutality, and so they're just blazing over the loss of life when they do this. Forty percent of the incidents involved are people who are under influence or have mental health issues, of which almost none of those cases has there been called any mental health experts or issues like that. They don't get, and a lot of that, a lot of the reason why they don't maybe call them is because we've also been finding that within those reports, that police violence does happen within the first few moments of the incident. So they don't even get a chance to actually assess the situation correctly before they start using force. And this is the loss of human life within the next few moments that police is called. Reports often, you know, claim that it is a victim, that it's a lot of victim blaming based on like suicide. They often ask, "Are you suicidal? Are you suicidal?" One of the cases that I saw, it was a young boy who was 22 years old, and he was, he was talking to the dispatcher, and the dispatcher kept asking the pointed question, "Are you suicidal? Are you suicidal?" He kept saying, "No, no, no." And it wasn't until afterwards that I realized that it's a very pointed question because they're asking, they're not really asking if they're suicidal. They're saying, "We're going to shoot you when we catch you, so are you suicidal?" That's what they're really asking when they ask this question. And it's really sad because a lot of the times, we do see the policemen start to, when they can't get that answer out of, you know, the other people around that are survivors, they often ask them, "Oh, well, he was reaching for their waistband. He was reaching for their waistband." And it's already, like, they're in the process of thinking about their reports. How are they gonna get away with this? How are they gonna get away with this? And because those paragraphs are copied and pasted, it's simply just that they're being quite lazy.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you for the report. One question.
So when this report that you're working on, the data collection and the report, when will that be available? I know that YJC is gonna work with us on the District 2 hearings. Do you know when you'll be finished with this report?
Not yet, but we are working on getting the rest of the formula, the rest of the data tabulated as fast as possible, and we do have some workings, some bases in the working, so hopefully soon.
Okay. So I know that you're gonna submit a copy into, yes, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
In agreement, because we definitely want to see the written thing. Because I know it's very difficult. Michael Salwasser?
Yes. Remember that church in here? My name is Michael.
My name is Michael Solwasser.
I just wanted to say, I understand that you're one of our community organizations. We had been giving five minutes, I wanna ask you if you can keep it to three, just because we...
I'm just speaking as an individual.
Okay, good enough, so you got your three minutes, good enough, alright.
My name is Michael Solwasser, I'm a resident of Long Beach. I live in Lakewood Village, which is a community of overwhelmingly white, upper-middle-class and upper-class families. I had three incidents with police, with the Long Beach Police. The first one was, we found an open window at our home and we called the police because we couldn't, I didn't recall, I haven't left it open. They came out, we were very respectful, surveyed the property. They didn't find anything. And we got, you know, something similar to happen again, we called the police. I've had other incidents though, when I'm not in a upper-class neighborhood, where my experience has been different, where I came back after three days of camping, not had to shave or wash my hair, and being pulled over by police for speeding and treated in a very intimidating and rude manner. I've had times where I was abused and had long hair and was forced to empty out my backpack on the side of the road because someone had reported that maybe something had happened. I've also been profiled as being a gay man and was harassed by police. These were in other parts of the country. So I know my experience of having, the positive experience that I've had with police here had a lot to do with my socioeconomic status and the color of my skin. I have two other incidents though that relate more to the area of mental health. My son, when he was 18, which was eight years ago, he was not presenting symptoms of mental illness, but he was a disruptive child. We were having a lot of difficulty with him. He was acting out and breaking things in the house. We called the police, the single police officer showed up. That calmed the situation down. And we felt good about having made that call again, I was in that same day, the same home I live now. Two years ago, my son was acting mental illness and started to, from our vantage point, it started to creep into his life where his mental health was deteriorating. He was acting in ways that made us, my wife concerned and feared for his safety and her safety. I happened to be 3,000 miles away, across the country. So she ended up calling the police. She told the police that he was saying things that seemed very erratic. She was, although she was concerned for him and for herself, she told the police that he was tall, but lanky. There were no weapons in the home. Yet three, 10 police officers showed up at her house. Because she, we would probably not, we'd be much more reluctant to call, to reach out to the police for support if something similar were to happen again. It did not escalate. Things have improved since then, but they could always sort of go back to that. That's always a possibility that moves for us. But having 10 police officers show up did not seem like, that seemed pretty risky. That that could have easily escalated with having all those people there. They could have, my son could have responded differently than he did.
Yes.
I subsequent to that event went to a presentation put on by Nanny. And quickly, the narrative that the police had in the presentation was similar to the one that my minister mentioned earlier. That the police, you know, when we're dealing with mental health, yeah, 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 but, you know, we're law enforcement, we have to use force and sometimes things will happen. That did not reassure us.
Yes, thank you so much for sharing the story about your son.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Q, I'm from a church where I was Skid Row. I wanna give historical context from my personal experience with law enforcement in California. In 2000, actually in the 1990s, early 1990s, I was signed to a record label called Virgin Records. It was at Foothill Boulevard in Beverly Hills. My group and I would be driving around BMW, four of us in one car. And we would get stopped on San Vicente all the time. The record label had to call the police, the Beverly Hills Police Department told them, not to F with the artist. That was exactly what Gemma Caulfield was, the person who signed us. Literally had to call them and tell them. In the early 2000s, I lived right here in Long Beach, right up the street in a place called the Carbon Hills. And if you know anything about Carbon Hills, there's a police substation in Carbon Hills. And I was driving home, I was an actor legend at the time. I was driving home with a young woman and her little nephew. And he was about 12, we were driving home and a helicopter was over there for us. Twenty-three cars surrounded me. And they said, after the incident, basically, I fit the description of someone who committed robbery. Young man had been traumatized, never looked at the police, same way. In Skid Row, not too long ago, I'm a pastor of a church called the Church Where I Was in Skid Row. I headed, I was at midnight mission picking up some toys for some kids. I drove, I pulled up and, in a white truck, and police officers pulled up behind me. I was already out of the car, so I was some people on the sidewalk, hand on his pistol, "Get back in the car." Like, "Get back in the car." I'm like, "Really?" He's like, "I said, 'Get back in the car.'" So I complied, if I didn't, I wouldn't be here, I'm chill. I complied, got back in the car. And I bring those incidents up to say that, when you think about Skid Row and the way Skid Row's police, the reason he asked me to get back in the car is because I didn't look like a drug addict, which means he thought I was a druggie. Right, so, racial profiling, I mean, if you take Skid Row as an example, as soon as, I mean, 50 police officers for 50 square blocks, you have one police officer per square. And we know just recently Charlie Africa, two days ago, the DA paid back with the report and made up some, it's made up some excuses of why they killed Charlie Africa, but it was covered by Jeff Charlotte for GQ magazine. And he actually repudiated what they said. He called me, not a couple days ago, I was like, "I can't believe they made up a story in order to justify killing Charlie Africa." So, that experience, those experiences, I bring them up to let you know why someone like me cannot and will never trust the police. I feel they dismantle. And lastly, as a pastor, in scripture, there's no such thing as policing, but there were cities of refuge. If you can't find a way to get compassionate policing, you won't have it now.
Is there a question you want to, okay, please, please.
You mentioned Brother Africa. Can you just give us the 30-second version of what happened with Brother Africa? This is, story hasn't been read, so we're gonna...
Well, Brother Africa was, basically, he was a homeless man in his tent. He was from Cameroon, he was in his tent. And the story was that someone called the police over some robbery. Now, when the police showed up, Brother Africa went into his tent and basically, he refused to engage. They went into, so he went into his tent, they ripped the tent open and began to engage him. And a scuffle ensued and he ended up on the ground. From what we saw in the video, because after he was shot, I was there about 20 minutes later because I got caught, that someone had just been shot. So when we got there, everyone, the videos, everyone said, there was a scuffle, the baton fell, Trishan Carey was a woman who was about 99 pounds, she picked up the baton. They proceeded to arrest her and wanted to get her life imprisoned for that incident. I picked up the baton. But with Brother Africa, they said he was reaching, but you know, when you look at the video, they've seen about 50,000 times on YouTube. There's no way to conclude, determine that he was reaching. But that's, that's their story. And they are refusing to release the body cam. This is after LAPD, by the way, just got $57 million approved for body cam. But they're refusing to release the body cam of that incident, even though it's been a couple years. So, trust the police, that'll never happen.
Thank you. Oh, is it, the students are ready to take? If there are folks who want to file some individual complaints or commendations, we've got our students, are they out? Are there any law students inside here? Yes, complaints or commendations against the police? Okay, they're here at the end, so if you wanna talk with them, they'll take you outside to actually...
About Maria Elena Lamas? Yes, and after her, about Carly Kirshing and Jessica Quintana. I'm gonna be part of here where I am.
Okay, I'm sorry, Carly Kirshing and Jessica Quintana. I think my voice is low, because I hate to butcher somebody's name, but I need to be sure that I want you to...
Buenos dias?
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias?
Buenos dias.
Mi nombre es Maria Elena Lamas, yo vengo de la ciudad de Tonto. Por la misma situación y los problemas que se han sujeto, de, ya pero lo que está haciendo la policía y lo que ha hecho siempre y lo que siempre las prácticas que ha utilizado y que siempre, tu sistema es de pata, para que vamos a hacer a los otros. Porque ellos quieren un entrenamiento y un tacto para matar. Porque ellos no están aquí para la seguridad, para darnos seguridad, para darnos apoyo, para recibir las emergencias inmediatamente, sino que ellos tienen su manera de responder y agredir. Porque yo fui víctima. El año 2012, en enero, hubo un incidente ahí en el área donde yo vivo, de unos chamacos que este, se confrontaron, otra confrontación, porque ellos criticaron, se pelearon con uno muchacho que ahí de esa área que eran menores de edad y algunos eran este, viendo la partida. Entonces ellos llegaron, después de ser ya llegaron y hablaron con una señora, tenía, estaban festejando cumpleaños de una señora que tenía unos hijos ahí que estaban algunos muchachos ahí, participaban ahí en mi fiesta. Y entonces este, ellos llegaron a agredir y que se metieron sin una orden judicial para poder entrar. Y de ahí ellos se confrontaron. Ellos este, le pegaron al niño. O sea, llevaban la confrontación ahí entre la misma gente, entre niños y la mamá del niño que estaba festejando. A partir de eso, ellos se llevan a la lucha de que era represalias ahí en esa área, en Compton, ahí en el área donde yo vivo, que es en el área 1705 West, entre la Central y la Central y Nestor. Y, y en esas calles de esa área, cerca de la Lombray. Entonces ahí estaba, tenían mucha persecución, a partir de eso. Y a muchos niños que salían de la escuela, que estaban con sus mochilas, no les sucedía eso, mis manos, niños de 13 años, 12 años, les quitaban los patines, se dieron a la lucha, tomaron una depresión grave contra esa misma comunidad. Entonces, como yo tenía un hijo, un nieto que, pues mi hijo sí, sí participaba en una, en una pero no tenía ninguna orden de arresto, él no tenía nada con la policía. Entonces, para ese día llegaron, y llegaron como siete patrullas, llegaron con unas armas de alto calibre, grandes, como si fueran a agarrar. Me imaginaba yo como que el esposo de mi lado, yo me imaginaba porque esas calles fueron cerradas, como tres cuadras, y había como siete policías. Era un comando de policías que llegaron con esas armas bien grandes, gritando. Y pues yo estaba ya pasando esa experiencia y me asusté, definitivamente escalada. Salieron como sea, en dos más menores, a mi hijo lo sacaba, ahí estaba conmigo. Mi hijo, el mayor, supuestamente que lo andaban buscando ahí, pero no era que lo andaban buscando, que no querían, pues salían porque ahí había muchos muchachos, como donde quiera que hay chamacos que andan en, en esas actividades. Y entonces yo, pues ya me levanté, pues ya asustada y con mi buena intimidación que yo no sabía qué hacer, y dije a mí, dijo, "Si no abren, tiramos balazo." Entonces yo en la carrera, me levanté rápidamente y abrí la puerta. Cuando abrí la puerta, se metieron como mi hijo. Estaba durmiendo en la misma pieza que tengo un cinco, que estaba ahí conmigo. Porque yo estaba realmente de ayuda, que yo tenía como unos dos meses de ayuda. Mi hijo estaba ahí conmigo, esto no me acompañaba. Cuando les abrí, se metieron y este, buscaron rápidamente y pues ya arrisaron la camita de mi hijo y lo golpearon delante de mí y los pateaban entre todos y lo, le decían todo tipo de golpes, de brutalidad. Y yo que les dije, "Pero por qué le pega, qué hizo?" Y me dijeron, "Cállate, cállate porque estamos conversando."
My name is Maria Elena Lamas. I come from Compton. And the same situation has happened to me with what the police does and has always done. This is their practice, their system is a system of killing. They, okay, that's what they do and they don't want us to see that, but they're, what they, when they do their practices, what they're practicing is learning how to kill, not how to do security, not how to support us. And we see this in the way that they respond. I was a victim in 2012, it was an incident. They were young people, they were going out, they were fighting among each other. And there was one time when a woman was having a party for some of her children and some of those young people were at that party and they came and they, they battered people, they did not have a warrant to come in. And they started hitting the young people that were there. There was a confrontation between the young people and the mother at that party. And we were seeing, kind of that with Brazos in Compton. This was at 1705 West Central and, Nestor? Nestor? And it was near Alhambra. And after that, we saw a lot of persecution. The police would come and they would search the backpacks of the children when they were coming out of school, they would take their skateboards away. So I had a grandson and I also did have a son who was a member of a gang, but he had never been arrested, he never had any trouble with the police. And what happened was about seven patrol cars came, they came with long, high-caliber weapons. They came with high-caliber weapons, that's important, right? They came with high-caliber weapons. They blocked off the street for about three blocks and it was a whole command with their, you know, seven policemen with these high-caliber weapons and they were screaming and I was so scared. So they came looking for my oldest son. And I was so intimidated. They came up first, they were young people, they were involved in these activities. came up first, they were young people, they were involved in these activities, they said, open up the door or shoot. So my son, he was staying in the same room as I was at the time because I had been a widow for two months only at that time, and he was accompanying me, and they came in very quickly, they took off his shirt, they started hitting him. Um, I asked why they were hitting him, and they told me to shut up.
And entonces, ese es que podemos hacer ahora, tenemos estudiantes de derecho a cuarra, y ellos pueden tomar su queja, porque no tenemos mucho más tiempo ahora.
Okay. Gracias a usted.
Señor, señor, mire, tenemos, tenemos un gran problema con tiempo, pero gracias a usted, queremos tomar más información ahora con los estudiantes de cuartado. Yo trabajé en la gran policía, pero para darles más información, cada uno está muy claro, estamos, estamos mucho más en contacto con la humanidad, sobre todo los que estamos ahí, y los que tenemos también.
Gracias, gracias.
And to, uh, translate for, uh, this Anderson, she was just, uh, pointing out that they have lawyers outside if they were individual facing. So I was hurt, my arm was hurt, I don't have any lawyer, I have no one to defend me, it's not just Latinos and the Black community, but it's everyone who's been hit with this brutality and harassment, and I believe that it's like a business for them because they're criminalizing our people, and there's a lack of information, they're not putting their money into the prevention programs, they do receive federal funds for those programs, but they're not implementing them. So we have so much intimidation, both in and out of the jail. My grandson was in jail on account of the kind of intimidation practices that were, uh, going on for a very low level crime, he got fifteen years. So all of you in the Human Rights Commission, please do something for our community, the young people, they need to know their rights, they need to know about the law, their rights, and do the law, and do the classification.
Muchas gracias, thank you. I've got Carly Kitchen, Jessica Quintana, and Sharon Petrelli. I'm sorry, I, we can't hear you. Remember rapper mode. Yeah, is that the one?
Is it?
Oh, that's the one.
All right, good morning, kitcheners. My name is Carly Kitchen, I'm a boycott organizer for United Year Local Eleven, which represents hotel workers throughout Southern California. I work in Long Beach organizing hotel workers primarily at the Westing and Freda's House in Long Beach Hotels. Employees of these hotels are fighting for respect from the job, and provide better life for their families. And before I share my experiences, I'd just like to acknowledge that while I identify as cisgender and white, I believe that the experiences I've had with the LBDP are a direct result of my relationships with and proximity to working people of color, and I would like to thank the folks who've, uh, spoken for me today. I'm here to address the behavior of LBDP in response to peaceful actions by hotel workers, allies, myself and my coworkers, actions that are constitutionally protected under the First Amendment. I'm also facing criminal charges related to these actions. On numerous occasions, LBDP has shown up for peaceful actions in force, intimidating us, recording our activities, and regularly requiring participants to produce identification. On one occasion, as workers we fled at the door of the Westing Long Beach, which is a protected action under the National Labor Relations Act, LBDP officers approached them and required them to produce IDs. These primarily immigrant hotel workers were treated as suspects, though absolutely no crime had been committed. Their information was included in a police report despite request by workers and myself to omit their personal info from that afternoon. On several occasions, hotel workers, colleagues, and I have also experienced physical violence against us during peaceful actions. In these situations, we have attempted to use LBDP as a resource by dialing nine-one-one and asking to file police reports. During many of these instances, officers declined to investigate these assaults and occasionally would not even let us make a police report. Once after a hotel guest grabbed my bullhorn off my body and smashed it repeatedly on the ground until it split apart, LBDP did not respond to my call for help for almost an hour and a half. Upon the officer's arrival, he told me that if I did not stop filming our interaction, he would leave. Interactions like this make me frightened and have taken a toll, I remind myself personally. Um, I believe that the response to our peaceful actions by LBDP is excessive and unacceptable, particularly the justice of folks in the response to our calls for help. In this era of Donald Trump, the priority should not be to cycle free speech, especially the free speaking difference. The workers who are fight, uh, fighting for respect and justice in Long Beach hotels are primarily people of color immigrants. They take a huge risk to standing up to their management and constantly battle through fear as they do so. LBDP should not add to the fear and intimidation that workers already feel on a daily basis, because both workplace issues and the political climate are on the ground now.
Thank you very much. Jessica, give that.
So good afternoon. My name is Jessica Quintana, and I am a resident of Long Beach for over fifty-two years, and I'm also the executive director of Central Child, which is a Long Beach community and spending association. And as a nonprofit organization, uh, we provide youth development services, community services, immigration services, and court assistance for a lot of group here in the city of Long Beach. Uh, so if you can imagine, uh, being a director of an organization for over sixteen years and being a resident of City of Long Beach for over fifty-two years, I have a lot of experiences, uh, here in the city of Long Beach. Um, and I just want to thank all the speakers for being so brave and coming here today and tell their stories, because I echo every single even that they said. Uh, but the point that I want to make today, um, I'm really seeking the assistance of the, the commission, um, and I know that this is happening throughout the county of Los Angeles, is really the racial profiling that's happening with young Latino male in our communities of color, uh, in the form of gang injunctions. You know, we have a massive incarceration of young Latino men in, uh, in our communities who has been on a pipeline to the prison system for decades. Uh, having this type of system and law on the record and on the books is already impressing young people who are already experiencing low education, low performing schools, high unemployment, um, violence in these communities, and then adding on top of that, having a gang injunction in these, these impacted communities. So I know, uh, here in the city of Long Beach, there is a Mexican gang injunction that runs all the way from North Long Beach all the way to Central to West Long Beach, there is no other gang injunction like this in, in Los Angeles County. And so what we need, um, assistance in is, um, lifting those, those sanctions, overturning those gang injunctions. We're happy to say that ACLU is already looking at this, but what we need really is the voice of the commission and others to, uh, look at this gang injunction that continues to impact young men who are trying to reach their potential, who continue to have to go through the court system over and over again, who get tagged as, uh, gang members, but even further than that, they're, they're identified as local terrorists because they cannot get jobs when they're on a gang injunction, they can't pass security, which Long Beach has one of the biggest, um, courts, and we also have a refinery, so they go longer, these used to be, uh, friendly jobs to our young men in our community, but they go longer to get jobs there because of these gang injunctions.
Thank you so much, really appreciate your work and your involvement.
I'm Erin Petrelli, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
I've been a resident of Long Beach for fifty-two years and have been on the Black Union Revolution Act, targeting, and I have a lot of people in my life, very. Anyhow, this is my third attempt. Or being tried, yes, to civilize the Long Beach police, hibernating in, and, and, and hard for us to be, there's not been part of us, not our, not our term, not our, not our, 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 and, um, the beginning of organizing was by the Afro-Americans in the eighties, if they were taking the ground of, of their disbehavior at the Long Beach Police. And the Long Beach Police took a special position in policing, in the basement, I'll get to, I had occasion to talk with Connie Wright about the Long Beach Police once. Anyhow, that, the organizing was done first by Afro-Americans, and there was a group of local watching Long Beach residents, since the fall, this was primarily the black, maybe the liberal professional, and we, we never worked together, uh, Long Beach, I'm going, but, um, and I wasn't, and then I became an organization organizer, but then, nothing was that intended to be done, nothing through the coalition that we could, maybe at the city council. And so there were three, and the gay community was very well led by the police, so the Latin, there was a fight, and the ACB, the watching, were that coalition that had enough to make the attention of the, of the city council. But every time we went, what we wanted was, we were, we were for, for government, we wanted access and civilian review for, like, like, where the citizens could have some oversight power over the police, not going to stop them when they were outrageously. Now, um, but every time we went and thought we had, you know, the, the, well, they take the iron railings off it and we come out with a compromise. So the first time, we didn't have this, we were, we had some call, public safety committee, because the police complained, well, this is not serious, this is against us, there are other groups that have some police power, and so to be fair to the police, we now put down the public safety committee, because we have none of oversight. But, you know, people are, they're existed on some, we, the struggle, so that committee, that police, there is, uh, a woman, or a state council, that turned that committee into, uh, forming a, 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 uh, thing, yeah, which is what we, we pride about, and that's how we get international applications for this, but they didn't, they didn't willingly do their, uh, uh, charity, charity, uh, I have, and I.
You can see it.
We got several loopholes, you're right, and then something happened.
Ms. Petrelli.
Long Beach Police are known for being, they are, and, uh, and obviously, Black police, they came for me in a white car, they barely, they come from the American Conference City Council, like, and he's surrounded by Long Beach police, as I predicted, it wasn't long before they threw him through a plate glass window, but it was a state, and right the time he was in a PC car, and so that made that, so then the Long Beach Police agents said, I mean, the one city council said, well, what, what do we want, and we went back, and we got the C P.
Ms. Petrelli, we really, you have a lot of knowledge about the history, but we really need to get that in writing. Because, no, no, really, because your time is up.
I'm looking to be very conditioned, because I do have a lot of, I'm, 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 what you?
How, how, can you write down the recommendations instead? Because can you write down and submit that? Because I've got this many people and by, and about, who've got less than.
There is, because there's a lot of information, and a lot of, oh, then you're dating here. The other thing is, I have a question, I see this to be, you know, dated.
Yes, absolutely.
And is that going to be, is that going to be written?
Yes, it is, absolutely.
And so how soon will it be available?
Um, you need to check with our staff in terms of how that's going to be, but yes, it's a public record. And, and there are two more hearings, and please submit your recommendations in writing, we do want to hear.
And people, and I was saying, in fact, you have somebody dated with it.
Okay, oh, excellent, excellent. We're also accepting videotapes as, I can hear them, I, I can hear that, and we want that.
And probably, when you go and change a police department, try to change a culture of very, 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 that's, that.
Okay, no, no, please.
For the, that's a good one, you have.
No, Ms. Petrelli.
The Long Beach Police are the third worst department in the city.
Got it, got it. All right, I've got Trevor DeMar, Dent, Cherry, Dante, and Dwayne Dixon, so come on down.
Yeah, uh, so I think my, a lot of my thing is, is.
Can you identify your shop name?
Yeah, sure, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, my thing is widely intended to play this game, and we know it's already moved to the next stage. Uh, just, when we talk about state sanction violence, we have to also remember, particularly in California, whose language we're on right now, this is Tungbo language, right? At the height of the gold rush, the federal government was paying people, paying, were paying, particularly paying the state government here, uh, the people who were willing to do work, uh, exterminating the native people. So now we look at what's happening here, uh, this is state sanction violence, this is not, uh, the police are little more than the domestic military arm of the United States government. And so this, this idea that we're going to be able to reform that system, or that that system is not in some way representing the interests of the actual government, I think is deeply flawed. Uh, when we're, when we're talking about reform, we cannot reform a system that is fundamentally flawed by design. Uh, what it says protect and serve, is not to protect and serve you, it's to protect and serve the interest of power and those who own property. If you don't own property, right, which most of us don't, right, they are not protecting and serving you, even they, even talking about public safety, that's a dog whistle in itself, that came out of this idea that, that society needed to be protected from the Black men's, right? And so I just think, I just think if we're not talking, so my recommendations, uh, number one, if we're, if we want to lift up the human rights abuses of people who have been murdered by the police, right, we need to be looking at, uh, approaching an international committee like the, uh, the UN or something like this, not trying to go to the government to have them redress what they've done in the first place. Uh, number two, I would say we need to be talking about community defense, of how we protect ourselves from police coming into our communities, and number three, just really quickly, uh, we need to be, uh, educating people on the fact that, number one, the idea that we have rights is really nice in theory, but as Black people, particularly in this country, we have no rights, and that's why they're, they can beat you in the face and nobody goes to jail.
Thank you, thank you very much. Dante, Dante, Cherry, and Dwayne Dixon?
I think that, uh.
Two minutes, oh, oops, it's not on? Yeah, please give them something so that we don't have to.
I think we got, uh, uh, I have a question.
We need to mark it.
The question stated, like, if they're going to play, they're going to, is to ask you, to create.
I'm sorry, do what?
To create rules. The idea that, uh, there should be any trust in a system that brutalizes you is a foolish request. To trust the people who are brutalizing you, trust the people who are killing you, to trust the people who continuously do so, who will not stop, who will not make, uh, a appeal to stop, is to ask you, to create rules. And not only that, are you willing to be a pawn in your own destruction? And so we're asking, are you willing to endorse the people who are willing to kill you, and who are willing to exterminate your people until the last one? you, and who are willing to exterminate your people until the last one? Are you willing to do that? No, there's no way you shouldn't be willing to work for cops, is to be willing to die, not to die for any, any liberation, not to die for any freedom, but to die for the sake of dying, to die for the sake of creating a system in which you continuously, to die for the sake of continuously killing, that, that's what you're asking me to die for, are you willing to die so that we can continuously kill your people? And I think to, uh, to say that I would trust a system like that is to say that I'm a damn fool, is to say that, uh, I'm pushing for more deaths. And, um, to me, there's no difference between what's happening here in Long Beach and what's happening in LA, or what's happening in the Bay that we're standing from. I was standing there, they asked me, "Do you want to die in this?" That's what the police asked me, I went to the, the, uh, uh, group, to the, uh, the barricade, and they said, "Are you willing to die in this?" Because, what the question is, are you willing, are you, are you wanting to die for being beaten out for the press, and I'd rather do that than to just sacrifice myself for justice? And they said, "But I'm willing to kill, and I'm willing to kill all of our people, I'm willing to kill the natives, I'm willing to kill the blacks, I'm willing to kill the Long Beach people until we are dead." And I'm not willing to, to practice.
Thank you so much. I've got Duane Dixon, Malida, and Tahira Shapoor.
Hi, my name is Duane Dixon, I'm a youth justice coalition, I would like to just tell a story that happened early September. I was taking the Metro Red Line, and I was stopped by five police officers, fully equipped in armor and utility belts. They had a dog with them as well, which I thought was weird for a tap card stop. My fear was confirmed, but because the dog approached me and sniffed me, the officers used that as probable cause to search me. I was fully cooperative because I was confident in my innocence, but also being in over, I was kind of curious to see how the search process went, I'd never undergone one. Um, they all kind of looked like they were in, like, military uniforms at the train station, and, uh, the dog being there kind of fueled the idea that not only are these officers being paid hero wages and given military equipment to overcompensate in their duties, but they are also looking to penalize other crimes and offenses in the process. Um, I mean, because last time I checked, dogs aren't usually used to check tap cards, and that'd be kind of cute, though. Uh, now thankfully for my fellow youth, Governor Jerry Brown signed the SB 882, that ends criminal penalties for transit, transit, uh, fare evasion by those under eighteen. However, that doesn't mean that youth still isn't being harassed. As a very life example, uh, that's one, the story of me being searched is one example. Um, a solution I'd love to see take effect is to provide free bus passes to students enrolled in school, and taking police officers out of the metro train stations, and paying metro employees for those passes.
Thank you, okay. Who's?
Sheriff.
Sheriff. Malida?
My first encounter with, one of my encounters with police officers was, I was laying on the grass at the Rainbow Lagoon downtown Long Beach, and, and an officer came over to me startlingly and asked me what I was doing, which was obvious, and that occurrence happened during the governor's conference, which was taking place in Long Beach on that day. I've had several instances with police officers, primarily at council meetings, city council meetings. I think it's past time for certain solutions, um, you know, cops get suspended, win pay, they don't lose their pension, they don't get fired, they get to retire early, um, there's no accountability, we know that. I don't know what kind, I'm curious to know what kind of psychological test they have to pass in order to get into the academy, because it should be extreme, and to my knowledge, for Los Angeles Academy, they only have to be in the academy for six months, whereas in a military, it's nine months, school camp, I'm not sure. But I think it's also an economic component that this city be branded. Long Beach is now an international tourism and trade city, international, and I think there needs to be a boycott advocated for conferences and conventions worldwide, not to come to Long Beach, to have airfares, to have rental cars, to book hotels, conferences and conventions, they have to be hidden in the pocket. We don't necessarily have to reinvent that part of the wheel, it's been done before. The only time cities face up, and before I forget, I want to advocate that you all email the Olympic Committee and have them not bring the Olympics to Los Angeles, it is not deserving. I heard Barsetti say a year ago that he was allocating $100 million towards the homeless, I've not seen it take place yet, and it won't. This city is not deserving of the Olympics and what it stands for, and I think it's time for us to get sick and tired of being sick and tired, and be angry, and start boycotting corporations that continually uphold this, these systems, that continually and will continue to abuse, brutalize and kill people of color across the United States.
Thank you, thank you, no, we do have, thank you very much, the good recommendation, Olympics in general. What I've got, here's who I've got left, Wes, what's the time, Commissioner? 12:51, we've got nine minutes, I've got Tahira Shapoor, Elizabeth Aguilar, Yolanda Lopez, Irma Martinez, Kar, Prisada, Kathy Rod, John Kim. So, there's a bunch here, so, uh, we'll, 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 uh...
Oh, um, can y'all hear me?
A little bit closer.
Um, can y'all?
Yeah, we all can hear you now.
I've, I've had, um, a long history with law enforcement, um, starting when I was six years old, when my dad was incarcerated for almost 15 years, and he just got, got out in January. I went to predominantly Black and Brown elementary school, where school police were regularly there, did not see a counselor whatsoever, the school police were regularly there. I went to, uh, I went to a middle school that was predominantly Black and Brown, school police constantly there. I went to a high school that was predominantly Black and Brown, the school police were constantly there. Every single grade that you started, I mean, every single grade that I started, in all levels of school, I always knew where the school police was, I never knew where the counselor was, I didn't even, in high school, I think we had one counselor per 800 students. I can, I can tell you how to get arrested, I can tell you how, I can tell you how to get displaced from your home, things like that, but I cannot tell you where to go to get mental counseling. All the elementarys, middle schools and high schools I went to, were high schools, I mean, were schools known to have the most arrest rates, school push-out rates, and also, um, schools with the most mental disabilities, and also schools with the most foster homes. Youth of color, we don't need more police, because the only thing they do, the, the only thing school police help do is push us out, criminalize us, they ruin our lives. We need, we need more counselors, we, we need transform justice, restore, justice doesn't exist. You can't restore, you can't restore schools if they never meant to help out, um, youth of color. And you can't restore things and systems if these racist systems that we live in and are a part of, or whatever, were never meant to help us live, to get, so there's no such thing as restoring justice, I'm saying transform justice. We, we need, we need counselors, not cops, um, invest in youth of color, stop locking us up, stop trying to kill us, let us be human. So I'm calling for the, um, end of school, um, end of school police in schools, and all law enforcement schools, thank you.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Aguilar? Yes, we hear you.
Bueno, estamos aquí las dos porque las dos hemos sido parte de este abuso de la policía escolar de la ciudad de Campton. Mi nombre es Yolanda López y tengo abogando por una educación de calidad desde el 2005 en el distrito escolar de Campton.
Uh, my name is Yolanda López, and we are here together because we have both suffered the abuse of the school police in the Department of Compton. I've been fighting for a better quality education since 2005.
En el, en el 2010 empezó el acoso de la policía escolar hacia mi persona porque yo fui testigo de varios, varias abusos sexuales de maestros hacia estudiantes, de acoso de, de la policía escolar hacia los padres, y como los padres estaban siendo acosados por la policía escolar y siendo deportados. Y cuando usted quiere ser voluntario en el distrito escolar de Campton, o quiere inscribir a sus hijos, o quiere recogerlos temprano por alguna emergencia, ellos piden un ID de California.
Since 2010, I have witnessed the police harassment, uh, I've been a witness of several cases where there has been cases of sexual abuse from teachers, uh, against the students. I've also witnessed a police abuse against the parents, where, uh, you know, in order to be a volunteer for the, the Compton schools, you have to show California ID, in order to enroll your kids, you need California ID, in order to take out your kids early from school, you need California ID, and the police has been using that to deport the parents.
Entonces, en el 2014, ellos tomaron representas en contra mía, y en contra mía y de la señora Aguilar, a mí me mandaron a la corte, y fui a una corte criminal y a una corte civil, aún no lo he, no lo he terminado, pero yo quisiera que ustedes sacaran esto a la luz, porque el superintendente, esa es su táctica del superintendente con la policía escolar, él lo ha hecho en la ciudad de Adelanto, y yo no quiero que él se mueva a otro distrito y haga esto mismo que me hizo a mí a los padres. Ahorita yo tengo un récord criminal cuando yo soy una ciudadana que cumple con todos mis requisitos, además he sufrido discriminación porque yo soy una indígena. I speak a little bit English, because this is my third language, I speak my original language, Spanish and English, a little bit.
So, in 2014, I was, they brought a court case against me, a criminal court case and a civil court case, and this is the tactic the superintendent uses, she's in handcuffs with the police, uh, she has harassed me, she has intimidated me, she has, uh, you know, I have suffered all this, and this is the tactic she uses, I know she was in Adelanto before, and she uses the same strategy, and I don't want this to, you know, have her move somewhere else and, you know, have them use that tactic again and again. Right now, I have a criminal record, and this is not fair, because I am a, you know, a citizen, a good citizen, and I'm also suffering discrimination because I am an indigenous, I belong to an indigenous group, you know, uh, English is my third language, my first language is indigenous language, second language is Spanish, and just, I just speak a little bit of English, that's my third language.
And, uh, quiero hacer un llamado porque esto es lo que nos está pasando no solamente a mí sino a varios padres, también yo tengo mis hijos por todo esto, los cambié al distrito escolar de Lenox, y ahora quiero decirles que está sucediendo lo mismo, porque el distrito de Lenox está comunicado con el distrito de Campton, el distrito de Lingwood y el distrito de Inglewood. Entonces ahora la, eh, el sheriff está dentro de la escuela y también yo me siento apresada por el departamento del sheriff.
And I want to call your attention for you to please do something about this, uh, you know, all the parents, uh, the kids, we're all suffering. I had to change my kids to the Lenox School District, but now, we're seeing the same thing in the Lenox School District, because it's, they, they are connected to the people from Compton, the people from Lingwood, the people from Inglewood, right now, we have the sheriff inside the schools.
Y necesitamos hacer un cambio, pero ellos tienen varias tácticas, nosotros hemos tratado de, de, de educar a los padres y ellos nos han tratado de tirar todo esto, y queremos de verdad que, que se haga un cambio.
We want to see a change, they've been using the same tactics, we've been trying to educate the parents, but they are trying to just, you know, destroy everything that we've been working towards, so we need the truth to come out, and we need to see some changes.
Podemos presentar las pruebas que tenemos, porque aquí está la prueba de la corte, tenemos videos, tenemos fotos y tenemos muchos documentos.
Ah, excellent.
Todo documentado.
So, we can present all the evidence we have here, we have all the court documents, we have footage, we have pictures, we have documents, we have evidence, we can present everything.
Testigos.
And witnesses.
Que en la corte ellos nunca permitieron que los testigos fueran a hacer la deposition.
Okay.
And they never, we also have witnesses, and in court, they never allowed our witnesses to, to testify.
Thank you.
Gracias, y voy a dar oportunidad a mi compañera de trabajo, amiga y confidente y hermana.
Uh, now I'm going to give the mic to my, uh, friend, my sister, uh, my confidant, uh, she's right here.
Okay, gracias señor, two minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Aguilar, I have two children in the district of Campton. Um, I'm a speaker Spanish, it's my speler for me, my English is not, uh, not as perfect, and sometimes I'm wrong for English, but, well, I speak Spanish, thank you. Uh, en el 2014 comienzo a ser testiga de todas las violaciones de derechos civiles y las faltas de programas en cuanto a los estudiantes de aprendiz inglés, y también los ataques a todos los padres de habla, uh, en del habla español. Uh, nosotros fuimos a diferentes partes de Campton a entrenarnos y a saber nuestros derechos. En el 2014 denunciamos todo, uh, legalmente, de hecho, el distrito perdió una demanda en el 2015 porque no daba, uh, apoyo ni los programas necesarios a los estudiantes de aprendiz inglés.
Well, my name is Elizabeth Aguilar, and I'm a mother of two, I'm going to speak in English. Uh, in 2014, I was a witness of many, uh, civil rights violations, uh, in the school district in Compton, they were not offering programs for, uh, to teach English as a second language, and I have also witnessed attacks against parents that spoke Spanish, uh, this is, along with her, we've been, you know, training, learning about our rights in 2014, and in 2015, the school district, they even lost a case for not providing the resources and the programs for people that wanted to learn English.
Por ayudar a los padres como Yolanda López y Tegra, testiga, juntar evidencias, fotos, eh, videos, me mandaron también a la corte formando testimonios falsos y no habiendo una investigación interna en el distrito, solamente levantaron a escondidas los falsos testimonios y mandaron a, a la corte.
So, as she said, we have evidence, uh, photos, footage, uh, to document everything that we are saying, but I also want to say that the school district, they presented full testimony, they gathered full testimony, and they presented that in court, uh, they have done this without doing an internal investigation of the district.
Tengo aquí la documentación que se reportó al departamento de derechos civiles, el departamento de derechos civiles encontró todas las violaciones, incluyendo que no hay un departamento de traducción en el, en el distrito de Campton.
And we have here documents from the Department of Civil Rights, and they, they even acknowledged the violations, that they are not providing translation, the Department of Compton is not providing translation, they don't have a translation, uh, department.
Ah, y a consecuencia de todo eso, también el departamento de derechos civiles encontraron las violaciones, ya se corrió a la directora, ahorita, eh, han hecho las correcciones necesarias. Ahorita, eh, eh, han hecho las correcciones necesarias. Están los maestros que están involucrados, vieron falsos testimonios, están bajo la corte de la Unión de Maestros. Están haciendo correcciones, pero no están haciendo nada con la mesa directiva que preparó todo esto.
So as a consequence, the Department of Civil Rights, they have, uh, you know, showed that we are right if there were violations. They have fired the principal and they have made some corrections. For example, some of the teachers that gave false testimony, now they're being investigated by their own union. But nothing has been done about the school board that, uh, that made all this happen.
También en el departamento de policía escolar dieron falsos testimonios, investigación falsa que presentaron a la, a la corte. Y también ya hicieron, uh, corrección y las personas policías que nos pedían nuestros estatus migratorios han sido despedidos. Eh, pero no, por favor, pido que ayuden para que hagan, uh, cambios en la mesa directiva. Gracias.
Thank you, thank you.
So the, uh, the department has, uh, you know, they have cracked down, uh, the, the school, uh, police, you know, for their false investigations. They have, you know, done right in court, they have made the corrections, you know. They have fired all the police officers that they were asking us what our immigration status was. But we are asking for your help with the school board because they started all this and nothing has been done to, you know, uh, do it, get it right with the school board. They started all this.
Thank you. And what, what I'd like, if you can tell them to provide the documentation, copies of whatever documentation is for our staff people. We would definitely take that as part of the testimony. Okay. Muchas gracias to both of you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Solamente lo último que quiero decir es que, es que yo ahorita tengo...
We'll take your documentation, we have some other people to... Thank you, girl. Adina.
Hey, my name is Irene Martin. I'm sorry to let you...
Close, sir.
Irene Martin?
No, yes, sir, close. Close, sir? Okay.
Um, I'm trying to understand, um, LAPD's position as far as body cameras and dash cams. I'm trying to understand how a facility, a jail facility has state-of-the-art cameras, but yet no one knows why Rakeeshia Wilson was dead, which they said had committed suicide. I'm trying to understand. I'm trying to understand how the LA Commissioner meetings, before you enter, there are riot, there's riot here at 7:30, 8:00 in the morning. I'm trying to understand how Charlie Beck has made his decision about someone having mental illness and did not have records to this person's personal HIPAA laws prevent that from even happening. So how does that happen? How does Charlie Beck even make a statement about a 16-year-old being killed when they didn't know who the person was, they say, but yet there's ID and a phone in the child's pocket? I'm trying to understand why Charlie Beck is still head of LAPD. I have video of LAPD in riot gear, standing over me with batons in front of Eric Garcetti's house. Who ordered that? I have video of LAPD pulling out a baton and threatening me with mace because I want to take pictures of her, her badge, her car, her unit that she's in. Who's ordering this? I have video. I have cameras, I have photos of all of this. I will make sure that it is submitted to you as well as attorneys.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, my gods, I've got to announce these names. Sahar Piresada. Kathy Girard. Then John Kindred.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, thank you so much for giving me space to share what I need to share. Um, my name is Sahar Piresada and I'm here today representing a team of women from the Women's Policy Institute. And we're actively working to protect women's religious rights in the criminal justice system. I mean, theoretically, we're trying to. So I'm here today to share the story of Kirsty Powell. Kirsty is a young African-American Muslim woman who was pulled over by law enforcement on May 5th, 2015. Handcuffed, she proceeded to the police station in Long Beach, donning her religious head covering, similar to what I'm wearing today. As with many who enter the criminal justice system, her safety rested in the hands of the officer who brought her in. This particular male officer stripped Kirsty of her headscarf during the booking process in the presence of other male officers. As a woman who wears the hijab myself, I empathize with what she must have felt at that moment. It's as if some, as if you're standing shirtless in front of people, embarrassed and traumatized. In response, she pleaded for her scarf to be returned and it was not just a plea for her religious covering, but a cry for dignity to be restored. It was her right to wear the head covering as a woman, practicing her faith freely in the U.S. This is just one of many cases that CARE has received, um, the Council on American Islamic Relations, where women have had their headscarves forcibly removed while in custody. Lawsuits have been filed in San Bernardino County, San Diego County, Orange County, and at the federal level, resulting in concrete policy changes to better protect the religious rights, dignity, and bodily autonomy of women in custody. Um, Los Angeles County currently does not have such a policy in place. And so our, our group is basically trying to, um, recommend that a policy be put in place for the LA County Sheriff's Department and Probations Department. Now, as part of the recommendations, um, we want that women in custody, uh, will not be required to remove their religious headwear unless in a private area under the supervision of a FEMA officer and out of the view of any men, including male officers. We require that searches and pat downs shall be done by same-gender deputy officers. Um, and women in the custody of LASD or LAC probation will be provided temporary religious headwear if there are safety concerns, because they've decided that before. And, uh, women in custody who are required to take a photo shall be permitted to wear their religious headwear. Uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Do you just care, have a report that you could submit to us to have a...
We have a policy brief that we're working on currently and I'd be happy to forward that to the staff.
Please forward that to us because we want to get this...
Does LAPD have this policy?
So Long Beach Police Department, after this case was brought against them, they now are creating a policy. But Law, Los Angeles County, um, Sheriff's Department does not. So I don't know if LAPD does either. Usually they take suit from LA County, so if LA County does, I doubt they have one.
Can you also give your contact information to staff? Because we may be doing hearings on women's experiences.
Excellent. We'd love to participate in that. Thank you so much.
So, my name is Jenny Lada.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay. I spelled wrong, I wanted to be on the right.
Okay. Sounds better than that, right?
I'm here, um, now, uh, that's the reason. I'm here as a parent of a young man that was followed by police on the long street. At least there were more guards and he was beaten so bad that they pressed his face. And, um, it was charged, but he was released. I'm here as a man, a young man that was walking down the street, getting gas. But according to the police, uh, the guard was smelling gay and ran a mile away. He was beaten so bad that they pressed his skull. They knocked out his back teeth and he was leg over, received, again, no charges, no charges. Happy man, hello. I'm here as a grandmother of two children that have been submitted to the terrorism of smalting and gang violence, entering their homes with their parents' information, well, having guns put to their heads and being told the lousy parents they have. Because their parents' information or their wife's stupid women they are, they're allowing this smalting in their houses. I am here also as a witness for some of the statements you heard earlier from police officers. Before I go into that, and I'm trying to make this great, you asked for solutions. Body cams and orders have been suggested and are being, uh, given to some of these officers. And that's a great thing, but it's not very secure. And when they're the only ones that get to watch and hear them, this information should be made public. It should be allowed in the community. Here it becomes an accountability starts to come in place and they have to tell us why that was used, why the children were terrorized, or where that person was beaten. It's not just a way to protect the community, but it also protects those new officers that are doing their job. There are good policemen out there. They are surrounded by some that just seem to be going another direction. And I want to make sure that you understand that we recognize, maybe that I'm a chief detective officer, I don't like to be right focused. We recognize that there are good officers out there, but there are roads out there as well. And there are supervisors that allow them to get away with these things. My son told me, he asked, one of the captains that was sitting out there at the meeting, to count them and he was booked by that chief officer, advisor. Shut up, I can shoot you here, don't even know me. These are fearful things. When my grandchildren tell me they might grow up to be police officers and I ask them why? And they tell me so they won't behave like the police if they're out and locked in the bathroom, that's it. Now, I'm a witness here for the city of Compton. I have worked in the city of Compton for five years and this is why I think we might pave the way for this situation. There is confusion in the community, what a school security officer should be doing, what the school district police should be doing, and what the sheriff's department is doing. Their goals are confused in the city of Compton. You can look here, I've got a complaint that the child was molested, the child was being beaten. They are harassed, followed by school police. They are terrorized by district police. Where school security is being worried, confusion under the yard of the roads are. School police, they're called to chase them off, or the sheriffs that will call them and, um, also get involved as an elderly gang member reports. I'm here to share with you very closely that there's a classroom in mine, especially with children that are molested. One parent was told about it. Her six-year-old, her children, and all the children in the classroom were interrogated by the sheriff's department. California law does not allow to imprison four, um, uh, tops of children in the age of six or the age of ten without being found. But that was allowed to happen. The parent went, she was advised of what was going on. She went to the sheriff's department and they police reports, the sheriff's attorney, to advise her that her daughter was involved in the class boy sexually in a potent child play. But she went there, she was told that she would not have any reports related to the role. She also received calls from CPS leave, you know, representing her role in the family, then parents that were in the way of this.
Yeah, I, well, I, one more person who wants to testify, I'm asking you. Does your, you said you're the, the chair of the Human Rights Coalition?
We are the, the Human Rights Coalition.
The last, the team of... That's what, that's really what we would need. I mean, I, we definitely appreciate the oral testimony, but the specifics that I can hear that you've got, we would really want that for our records.
If you can show that to the ladies every year, whenever you're available, to make them, uh, start out there.
Okay.
Um, so I think, yes, there is need for the school districts to share with their students or their parents, if you think what the rules are.
Yes, 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 yes.
And the parents that are followed and terrorized and harassed by police or by sheriffs. There's some of these people who have been, this doctor who is doing this interview.
Confusion, absolutely.
So here as we revise, uh, commission, perhaps you could help find, sell some, uh, information, that you can explain to these parents and these communities and these teachers and these, uh, educators, what the rules are, what we should do. I mean, some of those have reservations that pass, parents are going to be marked there. And I am going to be leaving it for you because you should be aware of it.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. My last person is John Kindred? Yes, come on down.
All right, fine, after though, you can testify. Okay, please sit down. Right now, right now it's one...
Hello, hello. My name is John Kindred. And my, my problem happened at Long Beach City College when I was a student there in 2013. Which still today, in 2016, I'm still being harassed, uh, about what happened. Uh, what had happened was I had, uh, was part of student government at the time and I reported somebody, uh, one of the advisors, actually breaking the Brown Act and the rubber rules on purpose. And when I exposed them, they were mad about it and decided with their boss to tellerate against me. Okay? Uh, they tried to have me, uh, kicked out of meetings and things like this because I knew the, the rules and the law. And the fact that I had exposed them and embarrassed them, they used the police to, uh, come after me. Now, one, uh, I was, uh, the time, I was a disabled student, which I am still disabled. And behind this, I was given a citation, which when you read it, it says, what it's for is blank. I was supposed to be served a certified letter, which I never received, uh, by mail or anything. And when I asked for copies to show that I was served, nobody could show me anything. When I graduated from school, I was served by one of the people that I was accusing. And that was, uh, uh, over the years causing me problems. So how do you go and serve somebody when you're the one, the person that was causing the problems? And when I was served, I was done being a student. I was a private citizen. So I was never properly served. When I came back to the college, uh, as a, a public, uh, community person and spoke at a meeting, eight policemen showed up and I was arrested for trespassing on a community college. When I was there, I'm buying, and I have records of all of this. Uh, I told them and when I told them about my medical conditions and at the time, the disabled student office was still open and all my conditions are on record. I was arrested and hurt.
Yes.
My, my, my right shoulder has plastic in. And they finally noticed that I was hurt. They had uncut me and then they cut me in, they put handcuffs together to make it wider. I was told that I would go to jail, be booked, and released. I did three days in jail for trespassing. And when I tried to use the phone in the cell to, to be, uh, to be released out of my own, uh, consequences, I could not. And people in jail told me, somebody was really pissed off at me.
Yes.
For example.
Yes.
And while I was there, the bathrooms were like out of a movie from a third world country.
Yes, yes.
And when I finally went to court, it was dismissed because people in the community came out, and students, and my behalf, that it didn't happen. But yet though, every time I go on campus, to this day, I am threatened every time. And they took my knee brace, which I needed. And I fell and got hurt while in jail. I have a condition with my eyes that is so clear, medicals, medicals are covered.
Mr., Mr. Kindred?
And I was damaged too.
Thank you. Did you get an opportunity to speak with some of our law students to actually...
And I've tried, I've tried over a year to get legal help. And nobody's given that, given help.
That's exactly why they're out there now. So if you could give those specifics to them, hopefully, um, you know, we'll, we'll get some complaint going and we'll help you. I really appreciate your coming forward to testify today. Mr. Warren is somebody you do know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, after we break from the, the tire, uh... Yes, can you just do your testimony and we'll find the form after we do the close-up hearing? Because we are running out of time, we're out of it, please.
No, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, two minutes.
My name is Joseph Rosenbaum. I'm currently a resident of CLP, but I recently moved here, uh, resident of Long Beach for years. I've had a relationship with the citizens of Cleveland Commission since 2015. I'd quite get that too. There's no inspection of the Long Beach jail, none whatsoever. There's no public inspection. There's no public inspection, Citizen Police Commission, the last annual report is 2013. They don't keep up to date. You told the homeless people, I'm in the department, and this is a letter that I was submitting to you. I have another letter, actually a letter on inequality that was done about 10 years ago showing the inequality of minorities in Long Beach, which is one of the causes of crime. Um, I tried to find out how much citizen forfeiture was in Long Beach and the city would not give me the figures, I got from Stephen Downing, who was an ex-Los Angeles Police Department deputy chief, $4.8 million over four years. That's never given. The Long Beach Police Department has started in, um, language in its lobbying, other than English. I've tried to get this corrected, I've written two, uh, letters around the lanes, which is Los Anpiro, it covers West Long Beach. Part of anything that's ever been done of the things that I wanted, the Citizen Police Commission, is next to work. These are letters that John Kindred was sent, the gentleman just spoke. One is from the city manager and the other one is from the head of Internal Affairs. They both meet and, um, they meet and judge what's going on. It's so disappointing to work, try to work with, 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 Mr. Arturo Sanchez, the assistant city manager, who never calls me back. And the person who's in charge of civic engagement, her name is Karen Owens. She was on jury duty, I believe at the beginning of October, I called her, I left a message. She never calls me back either. I don't get any calls back. I wonder why. Maybe it's because I have something to say and they can't satisfy. I've been to the meetings and the churches, the police command spoke, still, I get nothing. Absolutely nothing. It's a disgrace what the city does with its police department. Absolutely a disgrace. I hope all of you are able to go to see the New Way of Life Gala at Hotel Omni on Sunday and, um, Michelle Alexander, author of...
The New Jim Crow, sure.
New Jim Crow will be speaking there. Are you familiar with that now?
Oh, absolutely, I'm familiar with her.
Are you gonna be there?
I'm not gonna be at the dinner, but I do other kind of work with the New Way of Life. It's a great organization.
I'll be at the dinner.
Good, thank you so much. Folks, we are...
Now, how, what do I do, submit these messages in writing?
See that man right there?
I'm not gonna do it now. Do I have to write a letter or what?
Well, just something to let us know what, what, what package we're receiving, but, and as a wrap up to everybody, right, um, please let staff know what your contact information is so they can tell you how to get your material.
Oh, okay, go ahead, go on, we've got one more, please.
Yeah, thank you for letting me, hello?
Yes, yes, two minutes, please.
Okay, hello, can you hear me now? All right, thank you. So, um, yeah, so, yeah, I do believe it's a disgrace. Um, I believe that the police departments cannot be worked with. Uh, there's been a history of violence, right? So now the police are, uh, before these are whip people in the back, now they shoot them in the back, right? So, this is my suggestion, okay? Um, but before that, let me, uh, have a little bit of time to clock. But when I was 12 years old, I was coming home, it was on Hoover and 42nd Place. I was coming home and the police stopped me, it was about 9:00 at night. They put a gun in my mouth and told me, now what, nigga? Ever since that time, every, the whole view, everything has changed as far as, uh, this system, right? The system that we wish to reform, right? This, 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 this system that wishes to kill us and murder us, right? This system where people choose to wear safety pins and say, you know what, I'm an ally to you. A system where people used to, uh, and still even now, vote for, uh, 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 people who, uh, who kill people of color, right? So, by having this whole meaningless, uh, reform, I don't know what, what y'all are hearing to do here, but my suggestion is that you completely work on dismantling the police department. That's my ask to you. I want you to all work on dismantling the system of oppression.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your coming in.
So, so we're, um, closing this, the hearings. Um, we want to be clear that we hear you all when we talk about transformation. This body is not going to be the transformative body. However, there will be a report generated, this is the reason that we're working with organizations and I know Black Lives Matter of Los Angeles is working with us on the second district hearing, is so it can be a tool as beautiful transformative, right? So, a body that's part of the state is never going to be the source of transformation. However, we can help provide something that is a tool for entities that want to do transformative work. So many of us have that sentiment, but we recognize that this body is very limited in what it can do, but we're trying to offer something. Does that make sense?
Many, it's all of us, I understand. So we appreciate everybody that's come out, um, and as Commissioner Bill O'Donnell said, we do have a couple more hearings, so there are other opportunities for speaking. Um, again, get with staff so you can find out the specifics of that and so for that, formally close this here, this public hearing of Los Angeles County Attorney on Police and Armed Forces. Thank you all for coming in.